Call this meeting in order and stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're meeting early is obviously the next thing on the agenda, the town hall discussion. It would have probably, I'm not exactly sure how to go on. I'm gonna let Joe kind of bring us to where we are. And then we'll, I think we'll probably have to do a field trip. I would think, unless anybody's against that. But I think we should probably be upstairs and see what we're talking about more than anything. But if you want to give us an overview, and if the Fire Department and the Historical Society wants to chime in, please do. And then we'll go up and see what we have. We all know what we have, but we should look at it again and see if there's room for improvement.
Sure. So the, we've met a few times about this. There was one committee meeting, I think, one board meeting, and then now this board meeting. It was discussed on what to do with the second floor, who's gonna get that space, and what was gonna happen with that space. Currently, we have one, the far room is taken by the Historical Society, the largest corner room. The next room over is now just storage. After July 1, all of that, all of the unneeded paperwork is gonna get shredded, which is gonna open up the space, that entire room. I think there was an agreement to give that space to the fire department last we talked. This discussion today is about what to do about the space down here where the Historical Society is currently housed, in this first-floor office. And the reason this is coming up now is because the town voted to fund a full-time recreation director, which is mean, which means we're gonna have one more employee in this building that's gonna need office space. And that office space, office space is at a premium right now. We don't have space here on the first floor. All we have is the front office that's already cluttered and full of, you know, office things. My recommendation is to move the Historical Society from where they're sitting on the first floor, move their entire operation to the second floor where they currently have a large space, move the current accountant into her spa, into this space here, because the accountant really does need a private space. I couldn't stress that enough. Doing the numbers and doing the books for the town, I can't imagine being interrupted day in, day in and day out, trying to understand what's going on and doing it correctly. So the idea is to move the accountant into this space next door, and then put the new recreation director in the front office.
Where the accountant is now?
Where the current accountant is now, yes.
All right, I would...
May I ask a question? You said the decision was made to be the empty classroom of the fire department. Could you tell me when that was made, and who made it, and why the other parties that made a proposal went and nullified that decision?
Well, I think, first of all, I thought we said we were gonna split that room, but that's... Well, I think we're gonna have to go and look at it. I, I don't exactly know when that decision was made, to be honest with you. We talked about it, we certainly talked about it. And I thought you guys were there in that discussion, weren't you? I thought you were, but I could be wrong. We met with you guys...
We did, and if I can speak. The area that we're losing between the old officers' room, which is where the hallway is to the new bathrooms now, and the upstairs corner, was eight hundred square feet. We kind of got our heads together, and we can do what we need to do with six hundred square feet, so...
What exactly, what can you do, what do you need the room for, is what I'm...
We need a training room.
What about the clubhouse, for lack of a better term? Why can't that be a training room?
Where's the clubhouse?
The meeting room?
The meeting room?
The meeting room is used for some training. The primary thing is the space that we, the space that we lost, the two hundred square feet that we lost for the hallway, was an office. We no longer have an office, okay. The six hundred square feet that we had is basically, the primary use is gear storage, which is a very expensive commodity, and it takes up some space. We also have some archive stuff in there, but primarily gear storage. And say the classroom is like five hundred and some square feet, it's a little under six hundred. So we're losing a little more by doing that. But that's how much space that room takes up. And in order to take what's in that space and move it out of the assembly hall into that room, that's the amount of space we require. And we had a discussion, I know Rich was there, Bob was there, Joe was there. We had a meeting with the officers, we walked through, we showed everybody what was going on, which is probably the second or third time that we've actually had a walk-through. And I think our needs are pretty, pretty solid. And we're not looking for more than we have, we're actually looking for less than we have, substantially less. But we can live with that. But we need that, that's the minimum amount of space that we need.
We've got personal records up in the file cabinet that are, you know, not locked, which really should be locked. They're in a locked file cabinet, but they're not behind a locked door.
Access and control.
So that's another thing that I'm a little concerned about, but...
Yes? I'd kinda like to go back to Victoria's question. At the last select board meeting, I thought it was stated, no firm decisions had been made. And now we hear there is at least one firm decision made. So I would, with her wonder, one, has there been that one firm decision made, and if so, by who and when? And then we move from there.
Well, I, I'm not aware of any firm decisions that the board has made, but, in the same token, it's a, we're gonna be the arbiters of that, even though probably in reality, that's a town manager's decision. But I wouldn't lay that on him, because, you know, we don't want him, we don't want him burnt in effigy. So I, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my head around it, and the only way I can do it is actually to see it. Is there a problem if we go up there and walk about and talk? Is that, is that a problem with anyone? Ma'am?
I, you know, I wanna be clear from the Historical Society point of view. We totally understand that the fire department has space needs. That was clear a year ago when we all walked around. My concern is that the select board in the past voted to give us space, and probably voted to give the Historical Society space. And I think for clarity's sake, and for future referrals sake, you guys need to vote on this decision so it's gonna be transparent that that was given to them.
I think that's what the plan is.
That's what's gonna happen.
That is the plan, and, but I need, I would really like to...
Just a question, Joe, 'cause I saw, we house Historical Society, fire department, town employees, and police department in this complex. Is there, and I saw the chief over on the corner, I don't know if he's still there, don't wanna put him on the hot spot, but I will. Is there, are, were you involved in any of, I know, does the police department have wishes in space or whatever as well?
We have one room up there for records right now. And there's a couple of small bathrooms that we are gonna try to utilize just to put equipment in. Noted that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we, we got everything before we went on our walk, so we'd be looking, and knowing what we're looking at.
This is the one chief is in here, I think he wants to come in and say...
I have one more question. When, when was the decision made to hire another employee?
That was put to the voters in March. It was part of our budget.
So in March, you knew that you needed more office space. And we were told about a month ago that we need to vacate our space. So if we had given, had given, been given more time, we might not have felt so bad about this.
Well, we're not trying to, we're not, we're not trying to hurt anybody's feelings. We're trying to accommodate employees who need to have, and, and the fire department, and the Historical Society, there's... We just need to figure it out. There's room, we should be able to do this. And generally speaking, when we find compromise, nobody's happy, so we'll see how that goes. But let's go, for my, I really need to walk about that space and feel about, I don't know about you guys, but I think that's...
I agree, I'd like to go up and walk, and feel about it.
Well, let's do that. We can adjourn that meeting to upstairs.
Okay, there's an elevator for the, as well as the stairs over here.
And there's stairs in the fire department as well.
I can talk upstairs. Sorry, I just kicked me. I was just gonna review what we have previously discussed at the last one.
Okay.
You can do that soon if you get up there.
Front door?
I don't want that.
I am, I'm taking stairs. Not two at a time, I'm taking stairs.
Oh, you have your salad? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So my, so I was thinking, last, my job, and Barry, your town office, in their meeting, they had one family that was huge in there. Every wall was something about that family displayed, so...
There's a kind of like a community movement that also was a little bit of a...
Hey, I don't know how many people saw, thanks for allowing me that, I needed to refresh my memory. And I hope everybody, at least we'll have frames of references now. I don't know how many people saw the office at the, that is probably the center of the controversy this downstairs here. But it's full. Do you have any idea of the mentions of that, ma'am, it doesn't, it really doesn't matter, but it's, okay. I'm open for discussion on, on what and how things could happen, and if... Ray Road, you got something to say?
Well, I just had a question. How much space does the accountant need?
It's a good question.
She's currently crammed into the corner. But sticking with the thought of, well, let's partition that. She, the accountant can't, the idea is to move her here to keep, keep it quiet so she can do her work. Having, having a random person or nonprofit walking in and out of her office would not be a viable option.
What if we were to put her in the back of that room? So she's the only one going over to the back. And she'd have her quiet space, and nobody would be bothering her. But we'd still have a little bit of space out front here for something. I don't know if we would keep some of the, the Historical Society maybe have that just as a display area, only open at certain times, like certain days. But I just, I, I looked at all the stuff that the fire department has up there. And I think it would be a wonderful idea to combine the historical stuff the fire department has with the historical stuff from the Historical Society. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. But I just, there's just so much stuff!
Well, that is, that is the problem. This entire building is, is a, having worked in a factory for a long time, this entire building is in need of a five S exercise, which is, which is briefly, briefly explained...
Major hole.
Yeah.
It's just a bunch of stuff.
Briefly explained, that means, the stuff you keep, stuff you don't. You put it in a pile, if you haven't gone to it in a week, out it goes. And there's a lot of that. One thing I suggested to the fire department when we were up there is, could they do their training in the main room? At, you know, it's not gonna be used for, for a, it's not gonna be used for a town hall that much. And, you know, you gotta knock down some chairs, set it up. Their concern was dragging hoses all across the floor that will be, will be finished. It's a reasonable concern, but, you know, maybe we can do some matting or some sort of something over the top of that, so that you just put that down before your training or something like that. That would open up, if we could do that, that would open up that big room that, that we talked about for you guys. And maybe we could split that room up.
I, I heard, go ahead.
All right, so that big room, I would like to see these regular select board meetings in that big room. I think there's more folks that perhaps would want to attend if, if we had more space, and it didn't get to a thousand degrees in here every night. But the question that I had in some of the conversations that I had upstairs were, how can the town support the Historical Society in better displaying those things that you want to display throughout all of town hall? And how can we assist in providing some sort of fireproof safe in the building somewhere for the archives that you don't necessarily want to display, but you wanna keep and hold on to and preserve, God forbid, anything happen to the building? And so I, I think with a combination of displaying more and filing away in a safe way some of the archives, it might free up a lot of space. It's just a thought.
I agree with you. The display, the displays need to be publicly accessible. And right now, upstairs is not publicly accessible.
Do you guys do any displays over at the library at all? Do you guys bring stuff over occasionally and put on display?
We have in the past, we have recently. Our only display right now is the one out here in the hallway. And we're, you're, it's kind of a domino effect or catch-22 effect. If we don't have display space, we need storage space, right? We can't get display space unless, first of all, upstairs has heat, electrical. It, it looks like it's clean, and handicap accessible. And none of those stuff are pull-wide now.
Well, it is accessible with the elevator, and there is a handicap bathroom there.
Is that doorway accessible? Between the auditorium and the restrooms?
It's, it's barely legal, but it's legal.
The fire marshal's been called several times by some, some random complainants.
But it, it is accessible.
But if there's no money, I mean, I asked him if there's any money to fix up upstairs. The answer is no, except for the, the infrastructure, I understand. But it's more than just infrastructure that's needed.
Yes? Walking around up there, I saw places where there was like an extra wide hallway, and I'm thinking, the lock cabinets would lock on them. Because people keep saying, storage, there's difference between storage and space you need to use. And if it's just storage, like papers and documents or whatever, there, some of the hallway spaces could be used, which is some really nice, big, lockable cabinets with shelves. And I think the idea of thinking of space multipurpose, like you use it two nights a week, three, you know, whatever, or we take turns, is another good, I think, to, to think about, as well as dividing space up that you already have, maybe in different ways. But the immediate thing is the issue with the downstairs office over there. Everything else is not immediate. If we don't have money yet to fix up there, nobody can go up there, I don't think. Do we have heat, do we have lights? You know what I'm saying?
Lights we have, we don't have heat, but we're going to have heat.
So we have to make sure things are coordinated if people are gonna be moving.
Have you gotten that bid?
No, he said he'd get it to, so we did reach out to, to accompany to get some heat pumps, 'cause we still have a little bit of money left for this project. So we were looking at heat pumps to make sure that the Historical Society was well taken care of.
You had another grant working on heat, air conditioning at one point too, right?
The MARP is, it's like five hundred thousand.
We have the MARP for wind preparation.
And cooling, right.
I have a question, and perhaps nobody has the definitive answer right now. But of the Peter Welch two hundred and fifty thousand that was sought and granted for upstairs, maybe not right off the top of your head, but for the next select board meeting, could there be a definitive number of how much of that Peter Welch grant has been expended and how much is left?
I'm of the opinion that was rolled into the, the building, the, the construction part of it, is that true, or?
Yes, that money is gone.
All of it is the answer.
And just one quick follow-up to that. How much of the monies that were either community development block grants or the Peter Welch money was expended on the downstairs administrative offices and the carpeting?
I have to split that out, I'm not exactly sure.
That was community development funds, and it might have been six thousand dollars. Round, round numbers.
For the carpet, right?
For the carpet.
For the carpet, yeah.
So what you're saying, my understanding, is that any of the community development grants and the Peter Welch have only been expended upstairs, other than a little bit for the carpeting?
No, that's not what we should have.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that at all.
Didn't say that.
But could you clarify that, please?
That was a statement, I can't clarify your statement.
No, what I'm saying is that you said that as far as the carpeting, you said that was about six thousand?
I did say that.
Okay, so my question is, of the community development block grants for upstairs and the Peter Welch money...
It's not necessarily, I think, I think you're confusing, and we're kinda getting off the subject of, of what to do with the space we have. But I will answer, just to be fair to you. The monies that we expended were expended for the elevator, the heating system, the painting, the carpet. It was all in that construction grant, that's where that money went to. So downstairs here, upstairs, what we did, the, 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 excuse me, the bathrooms up there, all of that was, was used to, and you're saying there's a little bit left, but not a, not a bunch. If you could get by the next meeting, just what is, what we have left, and there's nine thousand dollars left.
Oh, yeah, I remember that number now.
But getting back to the purpose of this meeting, which is the decision on office space, just gonna be that.
Okay, I interject it all. Don Proctor, probably speaking as an assistant chief of Fair and Fire. So go out there and walk in and around. We have many people who've been around in circles. Nobody's gonna be completely happy with any solution we come up with. There's obviously the one main room that we talked about, at least possibly doing with the fire company. You know, where all the, the front room, where all the paper was, that's gonna be hopefully discarded or gone through. We have the back room with the Historical Society, a very good organization, it's very strong in this community. But not to pick on them, but need some sorting. I would, and maybe overstepping myself, and I'm not trying to over-speak the chief, but we have some very good young people that would be willing with this Historical Society doing some pre-sorting, if they needed some help moving stuff around, and maybe, right now, it's not accessible. It, it's not lockable. We would help, you know, we can't do it during the week, during the day, because we, you know, jobs, et cetera. But if they need some quote-unquote muscle to do some of that, I would offer our services to do that. We spent with Fair and Fire close to eight hours one Saturday redoing our whole front section there, and cleaning, and sorting, and trying to do our best to, as they say, put your best foot forward. And whatever we can do to help them, I know a lot of it's more the contentious idea of this, this room down here. You know, in, in our full regards, you know, they need room, everybody needs room. We, we've taken a hard impact in the Bay Area with the considerations and changes to accommodate the upstairs, whether it be fire systems, et cetera. We, basically, when they were doing some stuff down here, this, Joe was in our area for quite a while. We had a little issue because of open areas with our, some roads that we took care of, and left some damage that we gotta do. There's some cleaning that we can do. We kind of, to be honest, became disheartened a little bit with our area. We were very proud of it at one time, I'm not proud of it right now. But whatever we can do to work with people, I think we've kind of, you know, the fire department set their, their mark. And again, that offer to the Historical Society, 'cause sometimes lifting and tugging isn't fun. But if we can help with any of that, we're more than happy to do that. It's just another foot forward that, you know, maybe we can help them in any way, shape, or form that would work.
The room with the paper storage now, which, which, you guys have your sights set for that, what would be in that?
Be an office area for a meeting, meeting with candidates. We do interview our own candidates. If we should have an altercation, a problem, or need review. Basically, we become, just like the, we'll say the town department, we manage our own people to our best abilities. And sometimes you'll have somebody, hey, somebody's having a bad day, didn't do something right, we need to review an incident. Maybe we had a serious incident, and, you know, Bob's with me on the first engine, we roll up, and somebody's dead in the car. Maybe I need to pull you aside somewhere and have a quiet, hey, what's going on, are you okay? 'Cause that, you know, first responder safety and health is our primary concern. The old days of suck-it-up-buttercup are gone, and we're very serious about that. We have some really good young people here, and I don't wanna lose them. But we're willing to work and be reasonable, but if you cut a room in half, what does anybody get out of it? I don't know. I, I mean, who, who are the players here? The Historical Society and the fire department are your main players, is that fair to say? Is that right, ma'am?
Yes.
I mean, you know, whatever, that back room could be, you know, I don't know which room works better for them.
Can I ask what the plan is for this room we're sitting in now?
Good question, if we're upstairs.
Long-term.
Yeah. Good, it's a very good question.
I ask that because every committee and every group that I'm involved in the town, I'm in here every week, all the time. And always, if somebody has this, if this is reserved, we get bumped, always. But it's a good use of space, a lot of people, a lot of us use this space.
To speak to what Chief Proctor was saying, a lot of what he was talking about as far as interviewing candidates, meeting with people, our officers' meetings, if, if it's on and off Tuesday, we've been having them in here also.
Right. So I mean, if they got private conversations here, we've all done it. And if this was something that could be shared, it would free up other spaces, I would think.
Well, that's where I was going with, with that. Nothing you said, and I all due respect, nothing you said actually couldn't be done here or in, in your meeting room.
I think the big thing with that room is moving the, the storage of the stuff that's now sitting in the, in the assembly hall. That, we need a place for that. Even to the, I was thinking of possibly, again, not knowing what we need for space, what we actually need for space, 'cause we did, as Chief Proctor said, we did a massive hoelout and got rid of a lot of stuff that was not needed, and was just taking up space. That room could possibly be split, and the front part of that, off the hallway, could be made into an office space for Historical Society. And the, we could have our storage behind that access off of that hallway, which is, accesses off of our space. And that would keep the continuity. And, you know, again, depending on room, and you really don't know until you start moving X square foot of stuff into a space to see what you have for room, but that...
That's, that's kind of a good compromise, though.
That's a thought, 'cause, you know, if they're just using an office, how deep does it have to be off of that hallway? I mean, well, for a desk and a chair, and...
Even if, even if, if we did move, if we did move the Historical Society upstairs completely, which is... What the town manager wants us to do. Um, so if we took that square footage in that room and put it up there. In that half, it'd probably take half of that.
But they, I mean, they also have, you know, you also have their other room that.
The other thing you could do is some of your storage could go in that attic room, the, that closet, that's the attic room. We talked at one time about building shelving in there and put some of your excess turnout gear there at one time. Remember that?
We did, we could.
And, you know, we could shelf that out. Obviously you got to have it so you can move in there. Um, so you can't. But I'm just trying to think of, of theoretical things that we can do. That aren't going to cost a lot of money, to be frank.
And the other idea as far as this space is, at least in the short term. To give you some ta, some time cushion, could you set your rec director up in a corner over here temporarily until you have your space for it?
Temporary, I, I mean, that's probably what's going to happen, but temporary turns into permanent around here unless there's a plan. And right now the.
With everything else that has to get done, it can't very well turn into permanent or we're going to be sitting just like.
Well, I think, I think a temporary solution is, is very, we don't want it to be permanent. So.
Right.
It's, it's reasonable to assume it's going to be temporary, but not forever. Get you an extra road.
I just wanted to thank the gentleman from the fire department for having, um, a compromising mindset. And, um, showing community spirit with what you've said. Um, it, it made me wonder too. Um, there's two rooms up there. Uh, one is a little bigger than the other. One has more windows than the other. Uh, maybe the fire department and historical society could talk to each other about which room would be better for which. And the idea of dividing it up and kind of knock that around. It seems like that has a lot of potential and it seems like we're both wanting to compromise and do what's best overall for the community.
Sure.
The, the chief mentioned, and I never really paid attention, but that's a beautiful room that you have your storage, the historical society storage.
I think that's one of the nicest rooms up there.
The windows and everything.
It's the best room in the building.
However, I wonder if that's such a good room for paperwork. You know, so it's, it may be a good idea to flip flop. Doesn't give you continuity, but how much continuity do you need?
Well, you do have the back door.
Oh, true. Oh, Rosen and you.
Actually, that's kind of what I was, part of my suggestion was. The stuff for the historical society, the displays.
We'll take a lot of it out.
Well, well, but my, my point is that is more public. Whereas if we have that, if we have the historical society in that corner room. One, you've got a lot more windows and like you said, with the sunshine, that may be, um, hurting. Some of the historical stuff we've got, the pictures and stuff. But I thought the middle room. Not having as much windows would be better for the stuff. But also gives more wall space to display stuff. It's better for public access. You won't have people walking by the, the fire department. Stuff, um, to get to the historical society stuff. I just, my thought was just, because. Isn't the whole point of just, just laying the historical stuff to bring people to see it?
So I would like to see it displayed all up through the upstairs. So if you did that, how much space would that clear up in their back room? Really, if you just, you have that whole huge room, you could display stuff around. You've got all ton of wall space.
Right.
I think if you did that, that'd, I think, open up a lot of space for your office, for your stuff, you know, I mean, right. It shouldn't be stuck in some back room collecting dust. It should be out in the open for people to see.
I just thought the front room would be more public accessible. That's, was my main.
Go ahead. You, you're, you're next and then Anne.
I'm, I'm up.
Yeah.
So I'm going to toss an idea out there because it, everybody, and I've, I've been in this position, I am in this position currently. We have a couple of groups that come in and are now asking myself and the board of selectmen fix this for us, make the decision. I would recommend having the fire department and the historical society sit down, give them a block of space. Say the two rooms that are up there and say, divide it. And let them bring a backup proposal. Cause if we, if it keeps coming back to the select board and, and myself, we're not going to get anywhere because nobody will be happy. But let's let other people make their decisions for themselves.
Another thing I was thinking of, what Mike has said is right. We should be able to display this stuff. The problem is, what do we do with the stuff until you're ready to have us put the displays up like in that?
I mean, can you guys organize some of it? I mean, in that room, I don't know much. How much of that is of historical significance? I don't, I don't know. I mean, I saw some art stuff like that, you know, displayed like, could you guys in the meantime kind of organize? And the stuff that really doesn't have really any meaning, like this Bob's at the five S, toss it or?
Mike, I guess, I guess what I'd say about that is that, um, every department represented here. From the police to the town office to the fire, to the historical society, needs to do house cleaning. We certainly admit that.
Right.
But the other thing is there is some value to some of the, like, some of those old, um, models that were built. At the old grade school like fifty years ago, people still want to come back and see them. I'm not interested in it, but somebody else is.
Right, no one's.
So we have to like go through everything and we would be willing to do that for sure.
Can I make a proposal? Because we're getting to it within, well, it is an hour since we started this discussion. There's been a. Dare I say it, a lot of positive thoughts here. Um, can we summarize? Can we get, do through the minutes, summarize what everybody talked about? And not tonight, not tonight, not tonight. I, that, that everybody can look at. And then come back and see if we can come to a, a real compromise. And it doesn't even have to be. At a meeting, it can be another one of the, the meanings that we had before with representatives from everybody. But I think we got a lot of, a lot, a lot done and there's, there's ways to fix this. And, and it sounds like we're on that track. And I'll let you have the last word, Victoria.
Just a question really. Could you clarify again, how many staff offices? Cause I heard you say accountant and I heard somebody else say recreation director. So do you need one or do you need two?
One.
One.
I don't understand the question, Victoria. I'm saying one.
Are you looking for one office for an accountant?
Yes.
Or are you looking for?
No, no, I just need, I just need one off. I, I need one office for an accountant.
The, the worst part of this whole, I said it was too big, but of course I didn't. The worst part of, of all these rooms is they're too big for one, one, like, that's a lot of room for the accountant. But it makes sense that she have her own room, so that's the obvious choice. Um, the rooms upstairs are very large. And I, I think we can do the training. I think for the cost of matting over the top of a finished floor, I think we could get your training. You'd have all the room you needed. But, so let's get, let's get a, a summarization of what we talked about tonight. And then let's give it to everybody and let's get together and, and get this finalized.
Only comment I have, I, I liked Joe, Joe's idea though of saying, we can summarize. But quite frankly, we've looked at the space. Sounds like two groups are using it.
So here's.
Come back with your recommendation.
I have a reality. You've got to define now, which wasn't before, you have the fire department as your main player and historical society. The historical society and the fire department will meet. You pick a date, at least a month away. And we'll have it figured out as far as that. And as long as you give us some of that, you're going to fight or discuss with them downstairs. The upstairs will be the only thing that the fire department, historical society.
Right.
Cause, uh, we can figure it out. We do this that quick. So let's get it done.
We could meet tonight on that.
Right. It's not what they want to do, just give some ideas.
Well, let's, let's do that. Let's, let's, let's make it, let's come up with a, a month's time.
You guys are afraid to be the bad guys and if we come up with a compromise and bring it back to you and make a decision, we want to get it done.
We all know what we need.
I just feel this perpetuates, perpetuates. Everybody puts their fingers in the water, but nobody's afraid to jump in. Let's jump in, get it done.
We know what we need. Historical society knows what they need. So let's, let us work it out.
The other, the other question that I have, if we do decide to, to split that and take over that closet in the big room. Is there funding available to finish that area, those areas? And where's the money going to come from to finish those?
There's currently not funding to finish, finish a room.
Well, at least have to be secure.
There you go. We can put locks on.
We could, okay.
We could, we can.
That would be access right to your.
We're not going to have, we're not going to have a pristine showroom there tomorrow.
No, but I'm just saying, could there be a, I mean, if we split that, there's got to be a wall up there and it's got to be secure on both sides. So where's, where's the money coming from?
And I think once we figure out what it is you want.
Then we'll.
Then we, then we got, then it's our job to figure out how to find.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Yep.
Seven o'clock, but I see.
Just a quick question. Do we need to find place here to house and, I know we're getting the rec director here. Do we need to find a place in the town hall to house the recreation equipment?
No.
We, we'll be able to.
I was just like, this would be one more thing.
There's a lot of that upstairs.
Yeah, there's still a lot of that up there and.
There's company that makes storage containers in town.
There's a lot of things that an old warehouse guy cringes every time I walk up there. I mean, I've been in the warehouse business all my life and. We need to work on it. But that's, that's a different whole story. That's, that's, once we get, how we're going to go. Then we can clean that to make it a quality space.
I just didn't know if we needed to find more space.
No, we're, no, we do not. There's a lot, there's a lot of room that is ill-used. Let's put it that way.
I'd just like to say thank you very much for having this meeting. I think a lot of good came out of it and I think we can work together fine.
Well, we're all the same town.
So thanks for having this meeting.
All right, folks, we're going to move on and.
We're going to.
July eleventh, you're going to adjourn this. July eleventh is a Thursday if anybody wants to know. That's a month away. Thank you. I really do think you were positive.
I'm good. Nice to meet you. I'm Joe.
Rescue squad volunteer.
All right.
Rebecca up to the front. Can we, she, can we move Rebecca up to the front?
Yeah.
Of the agenda.
Sure.
She's under new business at eight.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
I recognize the name.
I'm Benjamin's wife. So Dean's daughter-in-law.
What do you want to do? The amendment?
Yep.
All right, we'll do the amendments and then we'll do Becky. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, all right, so do the amendments.
Uh, I, I have one I'd like on a new business to put roadside mower proposal under new business E.
Second up.
Okay. As long as we got one proposal, we'll do that right now. All those in favor? Okay. Okay. You had another amendment, I heard?
Yes, I have, uh, I have another amendment, uh, put another under executive session. Uh, one DSA three thirteen A two, uh, real estate negotiation.
Your second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, and we are going to move.
The appointment.
The appointment of, uh, the Fairhaven Rescue Squad. There we have a volunteer.
Let's do.
I don't have that on me.
Joe?
Yes, I'm digging her email out. Yes.
Rebecca?
Miss, uh, Rebecca Royes, do I?
It's Stockwell.
Oh, Miss Rebecca Stockwell, uh, is interested in joining the, uh, Fairhaven Rescue Squad Board.
Good, representing the town of Fairhaven. Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Well.
We need a motion.
We do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Rebecca, is she Stockwell?
Stockwell.
Everybody okay with that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Do we want Rebecca to?
I can introduce myself. All the way here from Washington Street.
From Washington Street.
Rescue Squad Board, yes.
Um, I'm Becca. So I just moved to Fairhaven last February. Uh, my husband's a Fairhaven native. Um, Bernard Stockwell would be his grandfather, so town local. Um, I've been in EMS service since I was sixteen, so sixteen years. Um, I'm a nurse currently and this is my tenth year as a nurse. Um, I am not currently active on a rescue squad. Um, I still hold, um, an advanced CMT certification. I have two little children and we live right on Washington Street.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for volunteering. Feel free anytime to come back in.
It would be nice to actually to have, uh, you come in monthly or every six weeks. But at least every six weeks to just update us on where, where the squad is and what's going on. That would be great. Cause we, it's been a while since we've had that.
If, uh, if you give me your contact information, I can say, I'm involved with the ambulance.
Okay, perfect.
I will send you the next meeting.
Awesome.
And all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's great. That's a hole that's filled. That's good. Um, approval of the minutes of May twenty eighth, we're already to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty eighth is written.
I'll sign with that.
Additions, deletions, corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. Go to Anne.
So I noticed that we didn't have a spot this week or on this agenda. To do any like recognitions. And I think there is a huge recognition that needs to be made. And that's the class of twenty twenty four, which will be graduating on Friday. And being very proud mama that I am, I want to brag on my girl. Uh, she graduated from Stafford. She had three awards. Um, just at the awards ceremony, she received the Technical Education Medal. She received the Rave Award, uh, Rutland Area Vehicle Enthusiast, and she received the Director's Award. Um, she has, last year she received the President's Recognition for her Community Service. She was on the Technical, um, National Technical Honor Society. She was inducted a couple of months ago. And she was the student representative for the Regional Advisory Board, which is this, the, um. School Board for Stafford Tech. So I just wanted to recognize my daughter and tell, say how very proud I am of her.
Thank you. Congratulations. Diane.
Sorry, yeah. Um, so I just have, um, one question about the Park and Ride project. Like I know things don't always go according to the planned schedule. But, um, I saw in the EDC's new little newsletter, which I think is a great idea by the way, it's nice to see. Um, that the paving is set to happen sometime in June. So I assume like the resurfacing and then painting of the lines is going to happen sometime in June. Is there, are there dates scheduled for that yet?
Not sure. Are we, are we anywhere near that? Cause they're going to do all the grinding before they do.
Okay.
It will be done, it'll be done this week.
Okay.
It's weather dependent, but it'll be done, they're going to finish West Park and they're going to finish the parking lot.
Okay, cause I guess, like, I'm just asking because when we're trying to plan, like, I know there are other businesses down there too. That like we have to buy a lot of perishable goods, that then if the parking lot is closed, we're not going to have much business at all. And so you got to understand every time that happens, we're like lighting money on fire. You know, basically like all that food goes to waste.
I'll get you the exact dates.
Okay, and so I would, I would really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah.
I understand there was a, a petition that's going to make it, so we need to vote. You have to set up a voting to, uh, sell a property on River Street. Um, I was wondering if it might be beneficial or if. Um, I was wondering if it might be beneficial or if it's possible. There are some other properties in town that I believe are, are in the next year or so going to be going up for sale. Could we vote on all the properties at once if a petition was circulated? Would it, would it help the town? If a petition was put out there, something along the lines of, uh, shall the town sell the properties, uh, at a, at an amount and list the properties, uh, recommended by a licensed realtor or, and then approved by the board or something like that? Because it seems like it kicks it down the road. We're not getting tax dollars in on properties that the town owns. So if it's gonna happen anyway, can we do it all at once?
We don't always have to have a, have a vote.
Right.
And we've sold several properties. The, the, the part I see that's troublesome there is we're telegraphing what we're gonna get for the property if we, if we vote on it, you know, so.
Well, I'm not saying put an amount down, but I'm saying that, that, when you sell a property, don't you go through a realtor and listen to their recommendations anyway?
Yeah, but we don't say, we don't say out loud what we're gonna get. It's a, it's a, like any other property sale.
Right, that's why I was saying, instead of saying an amount, put a petition out, sell the, authorize the sale of property, uh, for an amount within certain percentage of the recommendation of the licensed realtor or professional. Would that save time in the future? Because I feel like we're missing tax dollars and, and we're gonna, it, it may happen again and again if, if this type of thing keeps happening. If, if, if there's no benefit to it, there's no benefit. I just didn't know, it's something that's possible to, if we're gonna vote, if we're gonna have to pay the money to have people vote, cause it costs money to make a vote, what, why not pay that money once and handle
Yeah.
the whole, whole pile of it?
It, the, the process, you go ahead, go ahead.
So, so the, the Billowitzes will pull a petition when we go to sell those properties, right? They have cost the town an extraordinarily large amount of money to deal with these properties. Like, I, I know nobody has said this, but it is an extremely huge amount of money that that family has cost this town. And they will continue to do that. Okay, there's no way around it. A petition could be had and handed to the board. It would be strictly advisory. Cause I thought about this. We've had it a month in the past, in the past, but there's no way to do it around this one. They'll continue.
Well, I know.
They'll continue to go out.
And it's well within their rights to, to do a petition. I'm just wondering, is there a way to, if we're gonna have to vote on, on the sale of every property or a number of properties?
We don't have, we don't, this is.
I know we don't right now, but.
The Billowitzes will get a petition to stop the sale of the other properties. That's what they're planning to do. Or am I wrong?
The, the other end of that is, the process is, we put up a sale, we advertise that we're gonna make that sale. And if somebody wants to, um, have the town vote on the, the ability to sell that piece of property, then they put a petition in as the Billowitzes did in this last, so, and then we have to have a vote.
Right.
But ninety-nine percent of the time, maybe not that much, maybe eighty percent of the time, we never get to that point, cause people are happy to see it go back on the tax rolls, so it doesn't happen. So it, it may not be worth the trouble to anticipate those votes. And I, if you do a vote to make it binding, you have to put in a number. Shall the town?
You do?
You have to, you have, you have to, shall the town receive X, not to exceed X amount of dollars or, or some, some wording that has real dollar amounts in each one of those. So each property you would have to say.
I didn't really, I didn't know it would have to have a specific dollar amount.
If you don't, that's why the, the sidewalk vote, that we got the other, that was just advisory, cause it didn't have numbers that people could say the town cannot expend above and beyond.
Right.
We vote on the sidewalks, the next time it will be, um, much more specific.
Thank you.
You're good?
Thank you.
Any other? And we're gonna move on. Uh, department head reports? We got a bunch of department heads here tonight.
We do.
Kinda nice.
Got anything?
Or you wanna wait?
No, I can go. Um, we are in the process of having our new roof installed. Like everything else, lack of help, this kind of delay in things. Here a day, gone a couple of weeks, here a day, gone a couple of weeks. Um, things are going well, knock on wood. We haven't had any issues. Hopefully that'll continue.
Mike, do you have a cold?
Yeah, my grandkids, the little Petri dishes. Um, Blake, our intern's doing very well. Um, hopefully, I've been in contact with Nate. You gotta get a truck, but hopefully we can start our valve exercising next week. But trucks are hard to come by right at the moment.
How did you, your assistant get his test scores back today?
No. I, as far as I know, no.
They emailed them. I got mine today and Ryan got his, so I just wasn't sure. He should be, have him check his email.
I will do that. Yeah, I don't know if he received it or not.
Yeah, yeah, I got it like nine o'clock this morning, so.
Received what?
You're smiling, so I was, no.
No.
You're not smiling, Paul.
It's a very hard.
Yeah, I heard it is.
They said I'm out.
His test res, uh, test results on a certification test.
Yeah, that's a very hard exam.
It is very hard.
Good.
Chucking them off. Doesn't move.
That's fine. No, nothing to report. It's usually a good thing.
Some are budgets.
We will be talking budgets in a while, so.
Hang around.
Chief?
Um, in the last two weeks, we had, uh, just two arrests. They were juveniles, so I can't really mention much if they were before I gave you. Um, can't comment on any of that. We did issue ninety-three traffic tickets, thirty-six good warnings. We had four crashes. Um, I gave you a report of our basics of what we did in the last two weeks. Um, we handled one hundred seventy-five calls per service in the last two weeks, we're at seventeen oh three for the year. And just to recognize, um, part-time officer Tyler Gills in his ninth year of the department. Um, Van Pennington starts his second year and I started my twenty-seventh. And I gave you a breakdown of revenue of the quarter for the last, for the month of May. That's all I have.
Thank you.
They moved quick.
Um, let's start, let's start with the fire chief, Jim. I want, I wanna congratulate Jim on what a great job he's doing, um, managing the Park and Ride project down the street. We have pavers, we have line strippers, we have the EV chargers going in. We must have six contractors out there. And he's done such a fabulous job organizing this. I mean, that, that project has gone so smoothly and it's been so, there's, there's a lot of moving parts and he done, he's done a great job. So I just wanna thank Jim for what he's done over there. Um, security cameras, moving on. Security camera bid is out. That's due back on the twenty-first. Um, funding rolls in on the July first, so we should be able to get that project up and moving like week one or two of July. Uh, the auditors were here on the fourth. Um, they started next year's, they started this year's audit and are finishing up the twenty-three audit. Uh, they promised to have the twenty-three audit in by the end of this month. Uh, Scotch Hill, we're working on that project. After like five years, we got that information to the permit specialist. I'm waiting to hear back. Insecticide for the ash tree down at the park. I finally found somebody that'll do that for us. They'll, they'll treat the ash tree so that way the board doesn't kill it. But it's a, it's a two-year process, so we treat every two years. I meet him on Thursday.
Don't forget about the one at the playground.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Paver, um, so I do have some numbers from the paver. It looks like we'll have a little bit of money we can put towards Scotch Hill in July to, to kinda patch that road up. She's, she's looking a little rough out there. Uh, no Nate. So I did talk to Nate in next month, July. He'll be doing some crack ceiling along with all the rest of the paving going on. So you'll see some construction crews out. The guys will be out doing their job. Talked about Jim. And we gotta thank Ed, uh, Internet Ed. He's out there doing a great job.
Seriously.
He's just out there cleaning, man. He's doing a great job taking care of Fairhaven.
Who's this?
Ed Dolvin.
He's our part-time.
He's my, he's the, he's the part, yeah, he's the part-time DPW, uh, employee. Oh, and, uh, last thing, I promise. Uh, last meeting, we talked about Project WorkSafe coming in for a visit. They did send the report. Um, and I forget the exact word he, he used, but he said we are doing, and I'm gonna use the word great, but he said we're doing an excellent job, um, with our OSHA regulations. Um, they came through town hall, the garage, looked at the water tank, um, a few minor things, but nothing, nothing that jumped out at him. So the guys are doing a great job staying safe.
So the, the paving is two separate years of paving is what you're talking about, is that correct?
Yes.
The paving down at the park in South Park Place is last year's money, is that, and then we'll start our regular paving cycle after the first of July, correct?
Yep. We, we pushed this back, cause we thought we were gonna get that Scotch Hill grant. So we pushed paving back to this summer, thinking we'd be able to plow all the money into Scotch Hill, but here we sit.
Thank you, state of Vermont. Again. Okay. Question.
So just qualifying a couple of things. The security cameras, is that for the park or is that for the playground?
Both.
Oh.
And town hall.
Okay. Um, and did we not get the grant for Scotch Hill or are we just waiting on this?
We have a grant we're using that was gonna go to the bridge down here, that, yeah, the outlet, outlet street. Outlet, the outlet bridge.
Yes.
Adam Street, right.
It is wo, it's woefully, woefully short.
Right.
So we turned it back and they reissued it to us, to you as on Scotch Hill.
So what's the problem?
I don't know, there is one.
Right.
Oh, so the.
There's two different things.
Yeah, there's a, there's a culvert. This will pay for the culvert and some paving where the swamp is.
Where the big dam.
Where the water was hitting and the water was in the road. We're gonna get that fixed this summer.
That's gonna get fixed with a grant. And the, the other grant was strictly for paving and that was almost three hundred thousand, which would have gone a long way, but we did not get that grant.
That's called a class true grant. We are now seven, seven years not getting one. Is that correct? Seven years?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight years.
No, we, I mean, I'm sure we reached out to our representative and asked him, why? Can he, has he come to a meeting and publicly explained why, why we keep getting?
I can tell you.
I mean, anybody that drives up that knows that, that's, we've got two state parks. I mean, that road's horrible.
Right after I got done retiring, you know, I had some time, so I hammered on, I hammered on the state about that. Particularly that particular grant. They give out about four or five of those a year. Um, he knew that we were six or seven years into not getting one. And he said, last year we were close. I said, how close? We were twenty-first. And I said, what does that make us this year? Twenty-first. Out of five or six. So we didn't get it again. And we won't get it again. We, we're literally looking at ten years before we get what normally used to be a, a three or four-year, five-year turnaround and.
Ten years, there won't be a Scotch Hill road back.
I know. We're, we'll have to hack away at it a little bit at a time, whatever we can do. But it, the state is not forthcoming.
So when Joe mentioned, you mentioned that you found a little bit of money. You know how we took fifty thousand dollars and did that little bit of paving that's there? So if we have any kind of paving money at all, take another fifty thousand, because if we're waiting for the state to bail us out.
We're not.
Isn't gonna happen. Put another, put another fifty thousand and go further and we'll, if we have to do it a small section at a time, we'll, we'll fix it as we can.
We'll do the ditch and we'll do whatever we have to do, whatever we can do to control the, this, the, the.
Since there are.
Disintegration of it.
State parks on that road, why can't we turn that road over to the state and make them responsible for it?
I need the way it works.
That'd be great.
It's a beautiful idea. And believe me, that was, I spent every morning for several weeks talking to different people. And talking to the, talking to the representative who is the, uh, head of the highway committee, um, in the, in the legislature, uh, and explain that whole situation using, I said, we're essentially a driveway.
Right.
For, for those two state parks. All the, all those, uh, travel trailers and campers and everything come pounding up that road, cause they don't wanna go around, um, the lake road. What's the name of that road?
Creek Road.
That's Creek Road. And so they don't, they don't wanna go that way, so they come our way. And we suffer for it and we are kind enough to fix it as, as best we can for the state.
Can we put a weight limit on that road?
There is a weight limit, but it's, it, it's well, the travel trailers and everything are well within it. It's just the constant.
Can we lower the weight limit?
Not and keep it as the same class road, I don't.
You really wouldn't wanna do that to discourage people coming with campers. There's some of our, most of our customers from downtown.
Are we, are we responsible for the east, the creek?
No, that's where Castle.
That's Castle.
And what, pretty much past the old Coryell Road, Corrie's Castle, isn't it like, pretty much?
Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of aligned. Like, we, we own, we own Coryell Road, we own part of that. And so it kinda angles that way, but yes, we own part of Glen Lake.
Can we work with Castleton? Can we get together with Castleton and work?
They're, they're happy to have us get our road covered. Why wouldn't they?
So, short answer on that is we, we don't work very well with Castleton.
Sounds like.
And there isn't, there, it isn't a, it's a, it's a choice by the people who are coming here. And they, they can see which road, if they're dragging a thirty or forty-foot trailer behind their pickup truck, they don't wanna wee-wah around.
I don't even like taking like twenty-foot camper around the lake.
So they come Scotch Hill, boom, 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 and lucky us.
So it sounds like.
The state is not, they don't wanna hear our argument.
I think if you got, you saw with twenty-two A a couple of years ago after that accident, you know, they got put off. I mean, twenty-two A has been put off for years and the community was very outspoken and magically they front-loaded that. I feel like maybe people in the community go to social media and the news and start raising a little, you know, noise, maybe we can get the attention that we need.
We have to write letters.
Letters.
Write letters.
Call your representatives, call the governor, Roland Harrell, whoever. I mean, social media is a powerful thing.
And it gets a lot of attention very fast.
Yeah, I will, I will say honestly, uh, Bill Campfield put me in, in touch with the people I should talk to. So he, he did what little he could do, as much as I hate to, hate to give credit to a political opponent. But he, he did help with that and, and, uh, it's just, it's convenient for the state to not have to worry about this road. It's our road. We don't wanna give it back. There's too many things going on, on that road that is important to Fair Haven. However, you know, residences and possible business areas, but, but it's a, it's, it's a legitimate argument. We're just not getting anywhere with it. Anything else?
I don't, no.
Sorry about that.
That horse is gonna beat you pretty good.
Okay, yeah, it's, we got that horse beating pretty hard. Uh, warning for Sixteen River.
Yes, so as mentioned before, the Billowitzes pulled a petition to stop the sale of a town property. Uh, this warning is to put that property up to the town voters, so that way they can choose whether they wanna sell that land or not.
So we're looking for a motion? So you're looking for a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the, the warning for the River Street property on sixteen eighteen River Street.
I'll second that.
One question, can we incorporate it in the next vote that's coming up with the school vote?
Uh, I have to be, we have to warn it thirty to forty days out, so the earliest we could do it was, well, the earliest we could do it was July eleventh, but I put it on July fifteenth.
Right. Okay. So that's, when's the school vote?
I lose track.
This month.
They're gonna be next Tuesday.
So, everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So, so the vote is gonna be, there's a, just like the town meeting, there's gonna be a meeting on July fifteenth at seven o'clock, and then there's also gonna be the next day, Tuesday, July sixteenth is when the actual vote is gonna take place.
Do you need our signature?
I think this is.
Okay.
Is that ours, ten to seven?
Yep.
It doesn't say seven. It says start, start at ten AM. Down fire, down pulling push until seven PM.
Yep.
Okay, that's my question.
Mm-hmm.
Answered.
Mr. Greeno, you had me worried. I'm a pro at typos.
Final approval of the town plan. One addition to the town plan, which was the addition, oh, thank you, the addition of the sewer rehab project just added to the summary of collection system improvements. So we added sewer rehab project in twenty-twenty-three, which was a major sewer plant rehab. Um, we wanna make sure that was in the town plan. Uh, the town planning commission approved that change last Wednesday, and all we have to do is approve it at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the town plan with that change on page fourteen.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So we gotta blow right through this next one. What? Um, downtown sidewalk projects, let me find my papers here. Okay, I will, I will, um, there should be copies, everybody get copies of that. If not, there's some, some up here. Um, we got something from Stephanie Bork, who's been the project manager for, for that, for the downtown project. She gave us some recommendations and some clarifications that she needed to proceed further, and, um, so that, I'll read the, I think probably the only thing we can talk about, which will be a little bit, well, let's, attaches the summary of the next steps Brian Breslin and I think agree, were agreed on by the select board at the May twenty-first meet, special meeting. However, we're both left in meeting feeling concerned about several things. One, whether the select board, whether there was select board consensus on the modification downtown was desired curb line shift or elongated median. Two, whether any modifications to the current design will appease those who object to the project. And three, not wanting to find ourselves right back in the same position come November. So, before proceeding with any design modifications, I think we need to tighten up some important details as follows. At the June eleventh regular select board meeting, include the attached steps, so, the attached next step summary on your agenda. I will attend the meeting and ask to make this, any, any necessary changes to the next step, and then provide final direction in the form of a motion. For example, I recommend that the town have Dubon King evaluate both alternatives for modifying downtown, the downtown corner curb, curb line shift and elongated median, and the next step should be revised to reflect this. And happy to discuss my rationale at further board meeting. She was going to come today, we said that we probably wouldn't get any farther than this particular bullet point, and so she won't be here until the next meeting, is that what I, what I understand?
Yes, she's coming to the next meeting, but, but what she needs, if the board wishes to, if the board wishes to continue with the project and spend the money, um, the board needs to give Stephanie and Brian guidance. So he's not, and the conversation we've had is what's gonna, what's it gonna cost? What's it gonna cost to reevaluate this? They're not gonna tell us. They're gonna do it, and then they're gonna bill us. We don't know what the costs are gonna be.
Yeah, it's not right.
So it's, right now you need to decide, do you wanna do this evaluation and spend that money?
And I'll jump in to want to start with my, my two cents. What I, I managed to go to two of the meetings, and what I got from those meetings is we do not have the hearts and minds of enough people that I would be putting any more money into this project. First of all, if, if our businesses, people and businesses don't want it, and we're doing it to help the businesses, I, I, I know how to take no for an answer. Also, for me, the project's not funded. I, if, if we, if it was fully funded, we still have a shortfall on this project of probably three hundred thousand. I'm probably being conservative. I think, I think if we go back, half the things I read that the regional planning commissioner's looking for, it's gonna cost well over a hundred thousand more, take another year, and I'm still back in the same space where most of the people, the business owners don't, don't want it. I'm, I'm, I believe, as much as it pains me to take eighty-six thousand dollars engineering fees and give them back, I'd rather only give eighty-six thousand dollars back than lose more than a hundred thousand dollars on a project that's questionable whether they want it or not. So I'd, I'd be sitting to taking and, and finishing the project. We'll, we'll let our current park and ride and lighting the park, give it some time. If, if it's something that comes back and we are able to get the hearts and minds, then look at it somewhere down the road. Right now, I, I wouldn't do it.
No, I agree. I think after even, you know, the vote in March, you know, even though his advisory article was pretty well stated that the people in town don't want this, uh, just from what I've seen on social media, people aren't happy with a park and ride, you know?
Haven't heard a word.
I mean, I.
I haven't heard a word since, since it's been done.
I mean, I.
But, go ahead.
I have, I mean, you know, I was elected by the voters, and I'm with you, hearts and minds aren't there, cut it. I mean, we, you know, we said eighty-six thousand, hate to see it, but I wouldn't put another dollar into it if that's where it is, and save. Yeah.
I would like to say Glenn and Mike, thank you very much. My main reason for coming in tonight was to ask the board to consider just killing this project for now. The vote, again, even though it was not a binding vote, it really did explain what people are thinking and feeling about this new downtown project. And it was stated once before, and I think Mary or Roseanne had said it, Fairhaven people do not like change, but they want improvements. And I really believe in talking.
Well, what do you think we're doing?
Okay, but not to that extent, Bob. What the town wants is smaller improvements that's gonna cost a lot less and be totally funded with no questionable, where is the extra coming from? That's all it is. The sidewalks, yes, they need to be done, but they need to do just the sidewalks, maybe put some planters, maybe do, uh, there's other things that can be done without going to this huge expense and this long, um, uh, development phase.
And I wanted to, before you, I wanna be clear, I would love to see this project done, but as I said, I was elected by the voters, and the voter said, no. So regardless of what I want, I was elected by you and town people, and I'm.
Thank you, Mike.
It's a no for me.
Thank you.
Ultimately, what the people want, I'd like to support that. My concern with this is, you know, if it came down to simply redoing the sidewalks, that will cost the town of Fairhaven more money to do out of pocket. What the best estimate was eight hundred thousand dollars that the grant would not apply for, right? That grant money is specific to the project how it stands and not simply the sidewalks. My concern, and the trend that I saw even before joining the select board, is Fairhaven is notorious for kicking projects down the road, revisiting it, and then paying exorbitantly more later on. The design might not be the greatest, but does it get the upgrades that we might need? Could there be something we work where it's reasonable to most? I don't know. I don't know. I'm just concerned about how much it's gonna cost us down the road.
You do have a good point, and I totally get that, but I think right now there's so many unknowns, there's so many variables, there's so many things with this project, and as it was stated, a lot of people are not happy with the park and ride design of it. Um, and I think that the big killer for this new project is the design, all the bump outs, the loss of parking, not to mention the construction phase. We will disagree on that. We will disagree, I'm sorry, I do disagree with that.
Well, you're wrong.
Okay, maybe I am, but I do reserve a right to disagree with you.
The part of the park and ride that's closest to the commercial buildings, on the side that's faced like over by Ten Brook, there are ten spaces. On the side, um, towards the park, there are two. There's one handicapped and one regular space, and that, the whole, so I don't know how anybody could look at that and say there's no loss of parking close to the commercial building. So even if you added spaces on West Park Place, it doesn't help the businesses downtown. And truly, the, um, the fact that, like I mentioned at the last, the special meeting on the twenty-first, our business is doing less than half what it should be right now. It's way less than it was in January, in May and June. That is all due to the parking lot being inaccessible for so much of the time. So, you know, when you talk about a project that has a duration possibly of three or four months, I know other business owners, some of whom are here, we've all said, we think it will probably kill our businesses, so you could have a beautiful new downtown in front of empty storefronts, and I just, so as much as I wanna see new sidewalks, better lighting and all of that, I don't believe you have to do it in a giant project that tears up so much of downtown all at once. Anyway, I appreciate you all trying to do your best for the town, I really, really do, and I know you have your heart. Okay, never mind, you don't wanna listen to me, but that's fine.
I'm just, I can listen and look at the next person.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry if I disrespected you, but I'm plenty disappointed with the fact that, that when we put this out, when we were charged to do this by the downtown improvement.
I went to all of those meetings.
Yeah, and I didn't hear any disagreement.
That is true.
So then, now when we get to the point of construction, all of a sudden we hear people come out of woodwork, and frankly, I'm disappointed with the people that were in favor of the project.
We expressed some of these views, then, myself, Cindy, we did.
You weren't at the meetings, you weren't at the meetings and voiced, anyway, doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Rose?
So I have one observation and two questions regarding the park and ride. I've been parking over.
We're not talking about the park and ride anymore because we've got, that's.
Okay, okay. Um, so my, my two questions are, I'm wondering what the state's gonna do when they come through and pave. Are they going to force us to have curbing? Are they going, are, are they gonna force us to, I know that they're gonna get rid of the three or four parking places, no matter what we want.
The illegal ones.
The illegal ones. Um, but.
Or dangerous ones.
Are they going to do anything else? Are they going to put curbing in to force the, the narrowing of the travel lanes? This, I don't trust the state from here to there, and so I'm concerned that if we decide to put the kibosh on this project, that they're gonna come through and do stuff we don't want anyway.
I, I don't think that's.
You don't.
I don't know, I have no way of knowing, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do any infrastructure improvements.
They're gonna pave and line.
They're gonna pave and go, throw some paint down. That's all they're gonna do.
Okay.
They're not gonna give us anything.
Okay. And my other question is, is there any money, if we don't go through with this project, is there any money to get rid of those trees downtown? Just, just get rid of the trees, because they're blocking the storefronts, for one thing, and two, they are infested with stinging insects. It's horrible to walk down the sidewalk, you have to walk really close.
How many trees are even left on Main Street? I remember when it was.
I think there's like four or five.
Twenty-something years ago.
One was just, one was just knocked down a few months back.
A driver crashed into it.
Yeah. Um, but I just, is there anything we can do about that? Because it, people are getting stung, and it's, I don't know, I, I don't know, is there money or not?
We could, my, my two cents is, I'm pretty sure we own a chainsaw, we have a DPW crew, these, these are not monstrous trees, but that's a different discussion. I, I'd like to finish the discussion on whether this project goes forward or not. Rich, what do you, how do you feel on that?
Here's my thoughts, and it's been my thoughts all along. We need sidewalks badly. Eight hundred plus thousand dollars, not gonna get any help from anybody. Where is that money coming from if we don't do something like this? I understand we don't wanna go any farther into it, low money that we don't have, I understand all that, but I have a problem with the sidewalks. We, we gotta get something started on these, I really do.
As a, speak for a second. As a business owner too, you don't, you don't want it to end up being where this, a Scott Hill road essentially, to where we, I hear Chad's point there where they're gonna cost eight hundred thousand, oh, Scott Hill's gonna cost, you know, a million, I don't know, to repave it, and all of a sudden we've got everything scrambled and we've got no help. So as a business owner, I think if there was a way to design something that actually added parking as opposed to taking parking away, I think most of the business owners would be much more on board, so with the community. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think whatever we do, if we're gonna get any support from business owners, it's, it's gonna have to be in a way to be able to increase the number of parking spaces downtown. If it's not possible, it's not, but that's, that's my two cents on it.
So I, I've brought that up, I brought up, you know, what if we added parking, or what if we just did sidewalks, or what if we do sidewalks? The statement I got was, don't touch anything. Even if it costs, the next business owner fifty years from now, we're gonna kick that can to that person, and we're gonna pay more. That's, that's the sentiment I'm getting in town. Kick the can, let the next guy pay for it. Literally said to me, literally said to me.
But I think that, my answer to your question is, I think the grant that we have, the only reason we got it, and, and the money comes as close it does, is that we were doing some green space and we were putting some.
Traffic coming.
Traffic coming, safety and, and, and I think there were some trees that we, they asked, and I, I'm not very optimistic that the state, once we tell them, we wanna downsize this, we wanna gain some spaces, no, we don't want this right here, I don't think they'll give us the grant money, and we're still gonna be in the same problem.
That's my feeling.
So, I mean, I, that's why I can say we could, we could go, we could, we can put more money, we can put more time, don't think it's gonna change, and I'm, and I am all, don't get me wrong, would love to see that project completed. don't get me wrong, would love to see that project completed. Don't see how, how it's, it's going to be done. Is there a silver lining on it? I think so from my, by ending the project here, part of the funding we put together for our grant match, we used about a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money that frees up by us not doing that project. We just heard earlier tonight about how we're going to do some things upstairs. Well, I'm going to tell you.
Under grand would go.
Under grand would go a long ways for doing, that we have to, I understand.
Or Scotch Hill.
Or there's, there's, we'd be, we'd be talking about, but all I'm saying is, there's monies that I believe could be reassigned, and we could probably, at this point, I, I, I don't see that project, we, we can spend money and time and still not have it. I.
Might as well, I mean, we don't need to repeat what everybody.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, we end, end the sidewalk project, and that means sending the design money that we spent out of the grant back and send the rest of them, release the rest of the grant.
I'll second that.
Other discussion?
The biggest piece of feedback that I've received from an overwhelming number of folks is wanting to see some change, but having some very real concerns about the design, and the design not being what is wanted. We have an opportunity to look at what is possible. I'm just throwing that out there. Sounds like we're trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater. That's just my two cents. If the design's the issue, let's redesign it. Instead of having my kids pay four times whatever it would have cost us today.
What I've been getting from this redesigning, we're pretty much locked into what the state is going to require to get the funding. So if we don't play games with them, we don't play games. That's what I'm getting.
Where are you going to get the money for the redesign you're talking about? Because it's not going to be in this grant. There's another, where are we going to come up with another hundred thousand dollars to put a new design, and then try to find some grants and some funding to do it? I'm not, but I'm just saying, that's why I sit here saying, folks, we're going to throw good money after bad for, for a project that I'm not sure has the support to do that. That's what I'm saying. It's time to pull the plug.
We will, we will pay eighty-seven thousand dollars back, so there's no ARPA money, there's no hundred thousand dollars worth of ARPA money. We're going to need that to pay the, what we've already done, so.
But we also had, we also identified, when I say a hundred thousand dollars, we had all kinds of match money. We identified some other monies.
Couple of meetings ago, didn't we?
With grant match money, I'm telling you, there's about a hundred thousand dollars when you get done, that should be, when you, after you pay it back, that you should have, that's freed up for other projects. Because we, we had to have a pretty substantial grant match. That's all I'm saying. And, and when you start talking the sidewalks, I'm not saying you stop altogether. Get a chainsaw, cut the trees that are down there that you're having trouble with, clean up the.
Talk about the trees, but you, you.
Oh, no.
I don't, I don't want folks on the camera, or maybe folks sitting here believing that the guys are going to go out and cut those trees down, because there's going to be, need to be more done than just chopping some trees down, because it'll look awful once we just wax these stumps.
When you take them down, those stones that everyone paid for need to be cleaned up. I, I get it. But I'm saying, it's not a, it's not the end of the world. We also took, I believe, out of our streets and sidewalks fund, because you just don't do nothing. I'm not for don't do nothing.
Go to Home Depot, get some.
I'm saying, I'm saying that we have streets and sidewalks money that we put aside for this, for this project right here, and maybe we take what that is, and we do a section of sidewalk down there. And whether I pick and talk to the businesses, and we'll do a section of it. That gets us, this eight hundred thousand dollars, I believe if we bid the whole thing out and we pay top dollar, that's a good, that's probably a good price. But I believe we, we could get it cheaper than eight hundred thousand dollars. But that's just.
Any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor. Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No?
No.
Three to two.
Three to two?
Two opposed?
Two opposed, three.
Thank you very much.
We can't stop the motion. We can right along. I'm sorry. I think it's, I'm sorry. Speaking of ARPA funding.
I see that.
You have a resolution?
Yeah. I'm disappointed to see it stopped too. Yes. So we were, and I have to eat, I have to eat this. So we were going over when the auditor was here, we were talking about, you know, everything from last year and this year. And they asked about the ARPA funds, and they actually asked for this resolution, which I didn't have. So the auditor drafted this, this is, I missed, so what I did is I missed a step as we started to spend through the ARPA funds. This doesn't change anything in how the ARPA, ARPA funds are spent, or how much you have, but this piece of paper will need to go to the federal government to make us legal. So as the resolution, it should be read out loud, and then the board should sign it.
If, if you will.
The whole bloody thing?
You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll read it. Okay, this is Resolution 0124, Resolution for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Funds Allocation. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, the President of the United States signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act to provide continued relief from the public health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, ARPA created the Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Fund, SLFRF is the acronym, that provided direct funding to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, the Town of Fairhaven has accepted an allocation of SLFRF in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And whereas, SLFRF funds provide, oh, SLFRF provides needed fiscal relief for recipients that have experienced revenue loss due to the onset of the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, the Treasury presumes that up to ten million dollars in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency, and recipients are permitted to use that amount, not to exceed the award amount, to fund government services. And whereas, recipients may select a standard allowance of ten million dollars to spend on government services through the period of performance. And whereas, all recipients may elect to use this standard allowance instead of calculating lost revenue using the formula provided by the United States Department of the Treasury, including those with total allocations of ten million dollars or less. And whereas, the Town of Fairhaven has the need to fund government services while in recovery phase of COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Fairhaven, Vermont authorize the following. Section one, the following allocation of SLFRF funding to government services under replacing lost public sector revenue spending category is follows. Obligate the, obligate and expend SLFRF funds in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for the purpose of municipal workforce retention. This resolution supersedes any previous motions regarding ARPA funds made by the Board of Selectmen, passed and adopted by this Board of Selectmen, by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Fairhaven, Vermont, on eleven, on this 11th day of June, 2024.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution for the American Rescue Plan ARPA allocation.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we have to sign that?
Yes.
Recipients may. You said select. Did you want select or elect?
No, use elect. Yeah, I sent this to you in your email. You had this document.
Okay. Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Forest Fire Warden Appointment.
The state sent this. It's, it's time for Mr. Preventure to re-up as the fire, the fire ward. The board just needs to appoint, appoint him and then sign.
Motion? Motion to appoint Mike Preventure as the Fairhaven Forest Fire Warden for terms starting July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2029.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Done, dude.
Seconded, I'm sorry.
Ball field fence.
Still going with the ball. Again, we'll get there. We're still going with the ball fields. If you've been down there, it looks fabulous.
It does. It does.
And this is, this is building on that. The committee came and, and if you're at the softball field, you'll see it's kind of a maze of fences that, for some reason, have been put up. There's a request to spend three thousand nine hundred dollars to remove some fence and move some fence and put up some new fence. Mr. Markey is here to talk about that plan.
Sure. So Homestead Fence gave us a quote. They put up the, a lot of fencing down there over the years, along with the two new home run fences on the softball field and Little League Field, which turned out great. Currently, when you turn in behind the grade school and you make the left along the right-hand side is the softball field. It's got a, I believe it's a five-foot tall, maybe it's about six-foot tall, but it's a old chain link fence. It's leaning over. There are, there are also a couple of trees there that are kind of, I guess, grown down quite a bit, where people have to sit and watch the game. All the, the limbs and everything are kind of in their way. So the minimum, we'd have to obviously do a lot of trimming so people can have visibility to the games. But our thought is to bring that fence into the out-of-play line with a shorter four-foot fence there, where then people actually have room where they could park their car, they could pull up, just basically like they do at the Little League Field. It'd be the same setup as it is down, down the foul lines of the Little League Field anyway. It'd just be a little bit, it'd be a lot nicer looking for one, and it'd be more functional, and it, and it'd just clean things up big time. So there's, there's some money left over that, I believe that would be coming out of the field maintenance budget.
Yes, there's, there's more than enough there to pay for this project. With the caveat, so there was fifty-six hundred dollars that was allocated to groundskeeping, but fence repair and groundskeeping, I don't, it's kind of the same thing to me. So.
We're going to, we're going to mow the place anyways. Groundskeeping to me means taking care of stuff, you know?
Yeah. It's all on the same account for, for this project.
So we have the money?
You have, you have the.
Short answer is, we have the money. Okay, good, that's.
The only question I have, what's the update on the bathrooms? Are those still out of order?
Yes. The plumber said he would be there this week, Thursday or Friday.
So we were initially told.
Like June, for, May 1st.
May 1st, and we're, I mean, baseball season's over, and there's a porta potty down there.
Yeah. This bathroom has been just a bane of my existence. It's been like five years, and I don't think I've had one good season with it. I know. I've already begged them to give me a couple, like, one more year to see if I can't get it going. Because it's a nice facility, like, there's hot water, there's toilets, there's mirrors. It's, it's nice.
What's the concession stand? So that was a lot nicer.
Yeah, yeah. I think a storage shed with permanent bathrooms, a metal storage shed that can't get heated on fire with permanent bathrooms, would, would be much better than the, the trailer porta jockey there, so.
We did, we did that. The reason we did the trailer is because FEMA requirements made it unaffordable to do a, a permanent structure there. That's why we did it. The flood plain and all. That's why, that's why we did it. And that was like, more than five years ago. It was the last time it flooded, and then we got, we got FEMA involved.
So I'm, I'm asking you to give me some time. I know it's already about five years.
No.
It's definitely.
Surveillance.
It'd be nice to try it when we had some, when we had some cameras down there and at least catch the people that are messing this thing up.
Yeah, and, and it's not that it's not a good facility. So really, we've had, it's not like the thing is just falling apart. It's just kids went in and destroyed it.
Right.
So, yeah. And if we put in a bathroom, I mean, are they going to do the same thing? Are we going to get rid of something to buy something new to have that destroyed as well?
I'll make a motion to use three thousand nine hundred dollars from the Recreation Park Maintenance Fund for additional fence improvements at the town softball field.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Done, done and done.
One other thing we were going to talk about, pickleball on the tennis court transformation too, Joe.
Yes.
So there's, pickleball's been fast growing, and, and the tennis courts, unfortunately, there's one tennis court that just hasn't, I've never seen anybody use it, and I'm down there every day. Pickleball is extremely fast growing. The, the Castleton has a few, few courts over there, and you, honestly, you have to reserve it like a week ahead of time to get on. With the new rector actor coming in, we'd love to have some pickleball leagues down there and get that going. We've got a quote to basically transform that court into three pickleball courts, to just prep the surface and line it and get it all set for pickleball. It was twenty-nine hundred dollars. And then on top of that, we would have to buy the, the nets, which they're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. So if we had the, the good portable movable nets along with that, that come to about seventy-five hundred-ish, seventy-four hundred dollars is what we'd like to use out of the excess. Joe was, we were talking about it earlier. Joe, what fund was that?
This is the same fund, the Park and Recs, Park and Rec Fund.
Which I believe you said there was ninety-four hundred left, and that was, or was it eleven thousand? I can't remember.
No. So there's, so the remaining, the remaining for the fence and then the groundskeeping, I break it up by lines. The remaining in fence and groundskeeping is fifty-five hundred. We did save six thousand dollars by painting the fence out here around the, around the green. So there's that money sitting there as well. So all total, you have eleven thousand five hundred dollars in the account.
How long would that take to get that? Would you be able to get it this year?
We can probably get it in a couple of weeks. The guy is actually texting me as we speak here, did they make a decision yet? So they were the ones that did the, the Whitehall transformation over there for the Whitehall Rec, so.
What's your pleasure, folks?
So do you, are you looking for a motion to spend not, not to exceed, give me a dollar amount?
Seventy-four hundred dollars.
Not to exceed seventy-four hundred dollars for the three pickleball courts?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? There will be one person that will be mightily disappointed. But he's disappointed about everything. Okay. We're good to go.
Good.
It'll be good. That, that is, people do that a lot.
You guys are doing.
You're doing great jobs.
I did, I did check with Eric today as far as the accessibility at Castleton University for the, the tennis and everything. And they have six.
I think it's six new courts they built.
And they're, they're not locked. Anybody can use them, and they're, they're beautiful. They're way better than, than our courts down there. So if somebody does drive, obviously, play tennis, granted, it is a few minutes further away, but it is a lot nicer tennis setup over there.
Court rollers are out at Castleton, so if there's water on the court, they can roll them off. Right after I talked to Josh, somebody called my office and asked if the Castleton Tennis Courts had been converted to pickleball courts.
Great. It's, it's looking good down there. It really is. It's so much better than.
We've had, we've had a lot of support, and everybody in the community seems to be getting behind it. And with the director actor position, I think it's going to make a lot of, a big improvement this year.
We stripped it all together.
Just looks, everything looks good. Those trees, that was the first thing, just opened it up. It looks really good.
Just a quick question. So you're talking about.
So you're talking about setting up pickleball leagues?
Yes.
So would, if you were to do something like that, would those leagues be? And I'm just throwing this out there, would they be willing to like help with the upkeep?
Oh, I'm sure.
Of the?
I'm sure there'd be like a membership.
A running generator.
Yeah, sure. Cause like I know with, with the flyers up to the.
RC flyers?
Yes, RC flyers up to the airport. I know that they do some of the maintenance up there. I was just thinking if, and it, that's helped the town. So I was just wondering if maybe the leagues would be able to help in the same way.
More often than not, that age group of people is there to take care of stuff that they use and make, make it better and keep it clean. So they appreciate the fact that they've got a place in place.
Very true.
Can pay us to use those courts, I'm sure.
What's that?
Can pay us to use those courts.
I'm sure we could come up with some sort of membership of some kind, so. I mean, you gotta balance that out. I think if you do that in a league, you have a league fee.
There are really, yeah. If somebody wants.
Joe, if you wanna go, you'll not wanna go down and play at lunch, we're probably not gonna pay.
Right.
That's right.
But if you have, if you put together a league, you have a league.
We'd want the taxidermist.
Right, yeah. Oh, but there would be league fees, obviously.
That's, that's fair.
Yep.
Good.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Good, we ran out of.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, really, sure.
You're doing a good job.
Rich, make sure you close the gate when you come back in.
Okay.
That's Eric Green, is he?
Eric Green?
Yeah, that's Eric.
Roadside mower.
Oh, geez, still going. Mr. Greeno's talking roadside mowers.
Mr. Greeno's gonna talk roadside mower. All right.
Well, Nate got this ball rolling, but he's been, salesman's been looking out for the town of Fairhaven for some time now about a roadside mower, cause we're in dire need of roadside mower, that everybody knows. They, they took one in just recently. They're very, very nice machine. It actually was used at Albany County Airport. Hasn't hardly ever seen any brush. Very, very, very nice shape, no oil leaks, no hydraulic leaks. Low hours. As near as we can tell. I went, personally drove down and looked at it, you know, with Nate. Rubber is really good on it. Cap's really good, air conditioning works. It's a, it's a beautiful tractor. We can buy this tractor for $33,000. In my opinion, it's a steal. In my, they had one just recently down there that the salesman didn't get a chance to call us because another town showed up with a check in hand, bought it on site. So this is not gonna stay there. Probably have people looking at it already, but if we act soon, we should have a good chance of getting it. And I recommend we do it. Make a motion that we spend this out of our equipment reserve fund and, and buy this machine so we can keep our roads in way better shape.
So we.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion sake.
Yeah. So we currently rent roadside mowers, correct? The town does. How many do we rent usually?
We're not renting that.
I don't have that detail, I don't have the.
We're not renting any right now. Joe has one that we, he gives us if that's, he lets us use for like three weeks.
For like two weeks.
Okay, no, I wasn't sure what we, if we rent one.
The last.
That's not gonna last.
No, no, right, but I just wanted to know like, you know, what we pay in rental fees if we did.
Last time it was like $3,000 for the week.
I, I thought we did $3,000 a week, cause we have rented them in the past.
They're $3,500 a week.
$3,500 a week?
Yeah, and you know, $7,000.
And you know, like. We can't do what we need to do in a week.
Right, and it goes back in a few weeks anyways and you're.
Especially now.
Where?
Pretty much gotta run it.
Where would you get the money from? Do we have the money? I guess I'll start with, do we have $33,000? And, and if so, where is that $33,000?
So your, your DPW Capital Reserve Fund does have, you guys just spent some money, was it $30,000 for the?
Backhoe?
For the backhoe, but you dumped $10,000 in from the, the purchase of the sale, so you have like $55,000 sitting there. This, spending this money does, we, we haven't been putting money in our reserve funds. So this is, this is bringing us down pretty hard.
How does, and, and how does Nate feel about spending this money and bringing his reserve fund down?
He, he's on board with it. It's really good, he feels really good about this.
How mu, how much money do we have in the budget for next year's roadside mowing?
None, we took it out cause I was doing it for free.
We're doing it. Joe was helping us out going through COVID, or we would be easily putting up to, up to 10 grand.
It's, it's very expensive to rent.
Probably 10 grand a year. Take three, this, this machine would pay for itself in three years.
Yeah.
What's the cost? Cause I'm sure you have to replace blades, what's, what, how often do you have to replace blades every time you mow?
No.
So I, I replace my blades, it'd just be the second, second time in two years and they weren't very, I'd wanna say 150 bucks for a diamond mower and that's the same, same mower.
They're in brush time.
Yeah, no, I was just curious though, on top of that, what's, you know, maintenance, you're adding another piece of equipment, so what's maintenance gonna cost, you know?
As the, as our CFO, what's your recommendation?
I think the town needs this mower. I've actually had people come in and ask me, why aren't you mowing more? So I get, it's, we do need it, we need, need our own roadside mower. We had one at one time, but the thing was just so old that it had to go. It was unsafe. That said though, we really have, all of our accounts have been kind of drawn down. We haven't added anything in, in a couple of years, so I, with the cap, I think we should buy it with the caveat that I think we should start putting money back in our accounts.
I agree with that. Is this a mower that we can rent to other municipalities?
You could, but the, the insurance company frowns upon DPW doing that.
And, well, in every town, when, when, I think Orwell and Benson shared a mower for a while, I don't think it was a, a happy relationship. I, I've never heard a good story of towns sharing mowers. I, and I don't, I'm looking at it because I, I live in Benson, but I, I heard the horror story, so I'm saying, nah, we don't play well together, the towns, when it comes to mowers.
At the same time.
Right, everyone wants to use it at the same time. Nobody broke it when it's broken.
Right.
I mean, I mean, that's the.
Well, I didn't, no, I didn't break that, that was you.
That's the story.
Looked at when I got it.
Here's, here's my take on it. We have more than road sides to take care of. We have the playground, the brush can be hacked back all the way around the playground. We have the cemeteries. Cedar Grove, anywhere there's brush hanging out near town property can be hacked back. And a week or two of rental is not gonna take care of this. Okay? And we got days when you send guys out, half a rainy day or something like that, this, this machine can be used. When it gets colder weather, the, the machine's still gonna be used cutting brush back during our off seasons. It's a very valuable piece of equipment in that lines. It utilizes more of our employees in a good way to do it.
Any other discussion?
What's the average lifespan on a machine like this?
If you take care of them, they last a long time. This one's been well taken care of. There's many years of good life left in it, I'll guarantee you that.
I think our Sami was about 40 years old.
Yeah, we bought that from young, when I was still in high school, I think. Yes?
Well, speaking as Jack's fairer, I'm just thinking that this seems to be one of the things that we have reserve accounts for. I, I would get it.
Right, I think, you know, like Joe said, yes, we do it, but we gotta start putting money back, so.
Well, and, and it solves the problem. It's been nice of Joe, Joe to give us his mower for free for the last couple of years, but, folks, that's not, that's not.
That's not the way he can.
That's not the way we should be doing business.
Right.
It's, we appreciate it, but it's, we, we need to get our mower.
Yeah. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Done. Some people are wondering if we're ever gonna get.
Is there a position open down here? I wanna play with a new.
Water in sewer. Need to bring my elbow in line marked up before. Which isn't much marking. Okay, folks, we'll do water first, just cause it was on top of my, you lose. I'm gonna go line by line, I'm starting with administration. Tell me where you think we should do and, or if you've got questions for Mike. Get them.
I'm, I'm good with administration.
Watershed?
I'm good with watershed. Pretty hard when you, when you have a minus number, pretty hard to argue with it.
Yeah, it is kinda difficult. Water lines.
There you go. Question on the third line down, the 0206302100, where it looks like we've been doing 1,000, the actual was just a little over 1,000. I think I understand, I just wanna make sure I'm making, I looked to see what we've been spending this year and it's a little over 3,000. So that's why 3,000 was put in there? When I looked at your 24 use, I just wanted to.
A lot of it is, like everything else, prices are going up. Joe and I have been talking also too. We had that major break last year, which you can never account for, you know, God only knows if and when we would ever have another one like that. But you've got a lot of aging infrastructure, water wise, plant included.
And then that was the operating, operating supplies line item and I said, oh, I just didn't know if there was something new, like the chemicals. One time back a year ago, we were worried about chemicals and chemicals took a jump, but okay. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that one. Underneath it, repair and maintenance, when you talked about the water butt line break and when it looked like our actual from a year ago was almost 6,000, we've been doing 7,500 and we went 10. And last year we spent 27,000 out of that. That was because of the airport road is what I'm guessing?
Yeah. When you have to have like DigSafe come on, you have to have Fabians and, or whoever. Also included in that is we have a very simple, basic, for lack of a better term, metal detector. I would also like to get a newer one, like DPW purchased last year. It's a lot more accurate, tells you the depth of, you know, how far down. Right now, it's just, we're hitting bottle caps, nails, anything else and some people have three, four holes in their lines. So we're looking to get a new one. I've been looking at Eastcom and another company, they're roughly about 2,500. You know, depending on how fancy, you can go all the way up to 10,000 on most things, but we don't obviously need anything like that.
People spending money like crazy today, maybe just.
Yeah, really. I'll get, I'll get the quote for you tomorrow.
In that same line, the last two line items, they had under 23 and, and 56. They were the small tools and equipment and the other purchase services. When I looked at it, it went from nothing, we used the last, we, we had our actual of 1,300, 24 was a little over 3,000. I saw you put 4,000 there, the, the other purchase service underneath it had 5,000 in and it looked like you're talking the same amount of money, you just switched where you were, where you were spending it? Am I?
As I said, I'm, I'm wanting to get the accounts where I'm using the money.
Where, and that's what it, it looked like, I'm saying, well, maybe it was under tools and equipment and not other purchase services? Cause it came out to about the same, the $5,000 that the budget had, add up to 5,000 when you're all done with the four and the 1,000, that's 020632023.00, you know, at, at the top. I just wanted to make sure because when I looked at other purchase service and I saw that in 2024, we've used as of the end of May, almost $30,000, 29,000, I says, that's that airport. You split it up between two places, all the money that we were doing there, it looked like?
Right, and that's why I said, I mean, I know the town can't afford to just put 30 grand into an account and have it sit there for the next one. But a lot of that is, you know, hiring Fabians to come dig it up with their bigger excavator, you know, that type of thing.
Okay.
Which is why it's so high this year.
I'm done with that.
So that should be other purchase services?
Yes.
It's not.
It is, it's just down.
Well, that, that one underneath, small tools and equipment, right?
There's only 1,000 in that.
No, you gotta go down two spaces.
No, you're, you're good, you're good. There was, there was, what he's saying is there's only 1,000 in that and, and it was 5,000 before, looks like you took the 4,000, moved it up here under small tools and equipment, kept the 5,000, stayed the same, nothing changed, but it better reflects what he's gonna spend. And we had the flyer, the airport break where you had the extra equipment and that's just where you put.
Right.
Put things on, I mean.
But the other, or the small tools and equipment, like I was saying, the, the new locator and stuff like that, which is actually a tool, it's not purchase service.
Right.
Okay. Just looking for clarification, don't wanna change anything.
Moving right along. Water meters.
Looks good.
Same, same. Water treatment facility.
So good, just a quick question on water meters, are we, are we putting money in to replace water meters? Cause that's coming down the road, right?
I, yeah, I mean, I've talked to Joe, this is something where you figure you gotta put roughly 20,000 to 25,000 away per year. They're guaranteed for 20, they're guaranteed for 20 years. That does not mean that 20 years and three days, they're gonna all die. But, you know, where we spent 190,000 five years ago, you're now down to 15 years for the guarantee. You're gonna have to start thinking about how much are we gonna start putting away per year, so it's not a, you know, quarter million dollar hit.
Are we gonna be able to do these with this money right here we talked about?
Not that money, down below, right?
Right, well, yeah, as far as I know, we haven't put anything.
So for water meters, we'll be down below, isn't it?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I don't think there's anything in that at the, at the moment.
No, just, no.
Machine equipment, just regular 2,500 dollars in water meter salary.
There's 30,000 in there, Mike.
Right. We're not, we're not there, we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're just not there.
Right.
Yep, look good there.
Water treatment facility.
Question on, about the fifth one down, 020638022, repair and maintenance. It went from the 2,000 to 2,500. When I looked at what we spent this year, it's just over 1,000. So with the 25% increase, are we anticipating on the facility that we're gonna, we're gonna need to do something more or? I'm just wondering why we weren't still at 2,000 when we haven't, you've only used half of this year for what we had in there?
For the maintenance aspect of things, I just pulled the trigger today, we're building a shed up there to house some of our equipment and kinda going through all the stuff that we don't use or we don't need or that's, I, we've, over the years since I've started, my predecessors were pack rats. I mean, there's stuff on shelves that were broken and not used, I don't know if they were open to stink for parts or whatever, so. I mean, there's stuff on shelves that were broken and not used, I don't know if they were open to stink for parts or whatever, so. I can't say that I'm not gonna spend it, but I guess I'm putting it in there, better to have it and not use it than be ten thousand dollars over budget.
My concern is when you, when water goes up seven percent, where can we keep it at? Go ahead.
Um, I was, I was gonna ask, was there painting tanks in that?
Oh, yes.
You're gonna paint some tanks, okay, I remember the conversation, so there was.
Most of you guys have been up there, the five hundred thousand gallon storage tank, as you drive in the gate. Um, two years ago, we pressure washed the whole thing, and it looked really good. Didn't last, um, it's all starting to turn black again. So what I'd like to do is pressure wash it again, but why myself, or Joe, Jeff, or whomever. Pressure washes this side, this side can start being, getting painted. And get a good concrete ceiling paint, so we don't have to go through that. And it hasn't been painted for years, I mean, I've been there seven years now, and it was long before that, Tom, too. And like everything else, paint's going higher and higher and higher.
It just, I was trying to understand the increase, so we're gonna spend an extra thousand dollars in paint? That's what.
Anything else on that?
In that grouping?
Yep.
Other purchase services, number fifty six there. The, uh, year before, we had spent eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Not entirely sure what we spent this year on that line item, but it increased almost nineteen percent.
It did, I looked up twenty four, as of the end of May, thirteen thousand three oh six twenty. Is what they, they spent, so it looks like, uh, they're trying to, uh, trying to cover that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not going all the way, but, but that's, that's why it went up.
You know, purchase services include a wide range of things that aren't normally, I asked Joe, um, you know, like our labs. That's a purchase service, which never used to be put into that line item.
Yeah.
Um, pretty much everything used to be out of just the operation budget, everything was an operating. I'm trying to get it, like, you know, inbound labs, this is another purchase service. So we know what's spent on each.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, how much did it cost when the airport road pipe burst to get that tested? Just for reference.
Well, we didn't go up on the weekend, because we weren't close to being ready, so that saved us a couple hundred right there. Otherwise, it was some seventy five dollars for each test, which I think we did four of them. So, yeah, yeah, it's, like I said, if we, if we'd have tried to get it, a special, you know. Have them work over the weekend, of course, then you're paying them a hundred bucks each day to come in and, and do them, but it just, it wasn't ready to. Recharge all the lines, fill up the south tank, and it just wasn't ready to be tested at that point. So it was just a matter of a few routine tests.
The next line underneath it for repairs and maintenance, cause we see that went up twenty five percent from eight thousand to ten thousand. When in twenty three, we only used one thousand seven thirty one. I looked at twenty four at the end of May, and it said thirty six thousand three sixty one, so I'm saying, something big happened there.
I think that's all of the, off of the, um, pipes and stuff, kinda like stealing. Call pay Peter type of thing.
But, but then, but when I'm, but when I was saying, I was just trying to understand why that went up two thousand, why eight thousand wouldn't work again this year. It sounds like something out of the ordinary happened, but I don't want my budget to, I'm trying, trying to get that seven percent down.
I mean. For, um, like repairs, our turbidimeters are seven years old. Um, instead of the spending the fifty five hundred dollars per year for the service contract. We figured that if we save that, and get a new one every five to eight years, it would more than pay for itself in the savings. Um, I do know, we have one that needs to be replaced this year. It's, I mean, it's, it's reading, but it's not accurate, and the dryer doesn't work inside the piece of equipment itself. So, you know, that's thirty five hundred dollars right there, just for one turbidimeter.
Was there electrical issues that had to be fixed to, out of that line? Including the turbidimeter?
It, it is, and it's all part of the same thing, I mean, as, you know, I've been here before saying that our electrical and signal issues are. Getting better and better and better, but now that we've started, uh, removing some of our signal wires from the same conduits and stuff as our electrical. We have come across electrical issues that were just kinda like bubble gum together to make it work. So it would benefit at least having. I've been using Danny Gray, but somebody to come in and at least take a look at it and recommend, we should change this, or we should do that, type of thing. And that's another thing that should be done.
Okay, cause I know, when I look at the repairs and maintenance, I'm saying, we, in general, when the new roof going on, we did some electrical work. We put two new tanks in, I'm expecting the repairs and maintenance to, because of replacing, to start going the other ways.
Larry Macduff out of.
Yeah, I've had him.
Yeah, that's who we strictly use down in the village, and he's done an amazing job for us.
I'm, I'm just saying, is, so there's something specific you're gonna buy, cause I'd be looking for that line item to go back to eight thousand. That's what I'm saying, I'm looking, I'm looking, try to get away from that seven percent increase.
But you're also looking at a forty year old plant, too, that is finally starting to break down, and needs repairs of equipment and structure itself. You know, just like the new roof, that was the original roof, forty years that lasted.
Like your sewer plant, like us, you know, your equipment's only got about a twenty year life on it, and you gotta.
Right, well, I, I, I forget it, but I thought we were doing, like I said, I, we've been spending. Pretty good, I, and I'm not fine about, I'm just saying, you put, you put a roof on, you put two new tanks in, you put some new wiring in. I, and I, I expect that the, the repairs, you should have to do less than less. I, what I hear you saying is, no, we're not staying ahead of it, it's breaking down quicker than we're repairing.
Yeah, we're just like the electrical, we're fixing this and finding out that there's two other things that broke in that series.
It's not like you're starting at one end of a plant and fixing everything as you go, right through the whole plant, you're. You're fixing things that need it right off, and then something else shows up in a forty year old plant, so you allow for expenses.
And, and what I was struggling with was just the fact that, when I see an outlier like thirty six thousand, but the year before, we only spent one thousand seven hundred. And then I see ten thousand, I'm confused as heck that, that you, that we're spending.
So, kind of just thinking about where this money should be put, if we're thinking about the what ifs on major repairs. Wouldn't that be really more of a water capital improvement line item?
I, I, all I go by, I, I agree, all I go by is I pull up the general ledger and say, okay, on the light item, what'd you spend? And if you, and, and if you're, if you didn't spend what I gave you last year, don't be asking me for more this year, unless you've got a pretty good reason. Of what you want, and if you've got a good thing, like I gotta do those, I forget what you call it, yeah, that, that costs thirty five hundred, and we're gonna do X number of them. I'm saying, I hear you, now, now the math works for me, but, and again, I'm just trying to get that seven percent.
And I'm of the same thinking, like, how much are we really going to spend, and then the what ifs get placed into the capital improvement line item?
Right.
You guys wanna split the difference and make it nine? Anybody, does that make everybody upset?
I mean, I, I'm, finally, the way it is, if he's asking for it, I trust the chief water operator, cause he knows that plant better than. Anybody else sitting at this table.
I trust the chief operator, but I also pay, I think I pay more than I should for water today, I'm just trying to keep my water and sewer bill.
I do too.
I know, and you paid water as well, and so the reason I'm pushing and asking the question, I'm saying, no, we don't have, we're not made of money, and I just don't wanna keep paying if I don't have to.
I think I posed this question before, and I know I've talked to Joe about it. And I don't know if it's better to come back next year and say, you know, I overspent by fifteen thousand dollars. Or come back next year and have fifteen thousand dollar surplus.
But, I don't want, I want you to come in zero, zero, because you, you, you got it right. When I look at the budgets, my.
I'm just about to do that.
My understanding is the water budget, you're not running over budget.
Right.
And we had it, and we had, and water, it's gotta be over because of airport road.
Airport road.
But if you take the airport road flyer out. That's why I'm trying to identify where we put the extra money for, for airport road, you take that out. Then you get a true picture of what, what you said you were gonna spend, and what did you spend?
Right, but like he said, we have aging equipment, aging pipes, I mean.
I mean, we're, we're trying, I'm trying to get the signals and everything clarified now. Um, most of you guys have been up there, but those PVC pipes that are up there are original, forty year old PVC. And if you breathe on them, they crack and they break.
Come, come back again to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, no, Glenda was right, you're not overextended yet by, you're at ninety six percent.
Had a major break, and we still aren't overspending our water budget, so I'm trying to understand a seven percent increase, that, I'm just telling you, it's, to me. It wouldn't be nine thousand, it'd be eight thousand again, on that line item, two thousand of that would come out.
What's the rest, do you feel like?
I just.
I'm with Glenn.
Really else?
Let's change it to eight.
Okay.
I just. I just wanna make it work, that's all, I mean, I, I don't want, I don't wanna increase this water bill either, we don't have to.
If.
But I wanna make sure that.
We're sitting here this year saying we ran over budget by fifteen percent? Or you ran over budget, I, I, I just do the math and come out the other end, and, and I, I just, I don't wanna. Do a lot of what if, the what if is capital improvement, I wonder, what did we spend, what did it cost us?
Anything else in that one?
Actually, I wanna spend a little more, I, I had looked, there was the, uh. Oh two oh six three eight zero seven four zero zero mileage, the twenty four dollars was zero. We actually spent a hundred and sixteen, I think you shortchanged yourself, it probably should be, uh, the mileage, uh, you had four hundred in there. But it, it looks like, uh, you, uh, you, you shortchanged yourself, you should, you needed some mileage money in there, at least a hundred, and I, I'd say.
That was me, I, I whacked that down.
I was gonna say, I didn't cut that.
That, that one, that one there says, uh, wait a minute, you, you spent a hundred and sixteen fifty eight. As of the end, end of May, I put a hundred fifty dollars in there to, and would more accurately show what you're, what you're, what you're spending on the mileage.
Cause there's a couple trade shows, and I do drive my personal vehicle.
Six three eighty seven four mileage.
Town truck for the whole day, not being in town, that way there, he's got the tools and stuff, so, I mean.
They weren't asking for anything, and I'm saying.
Oh, I see.
In twenty twenty four, I know we spent over a hundred dollars, I know.
Saying a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, and I'm saying, put a hundred and fifty dollars in there, I, I just want the budget to actually reflect what's.
Right, well, like I said, I didn't, I didn't touch that.
Okay, okay, I got, I got this guy over here, ah. Can we put a hundred and fifty dollars in there?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Unless anybody's got some. Moving right along. Anything else there?
Uh, in the, you're still on the water treatment facility?
Yep.
The very last line item, six three eighty eighty three machinery and equipment. It went from seven thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand in this budget here. As of the end of May, we, we spent seven thousand one hundred twenty five sixty seven. Sounded like we were right on pace to that seven thousand five hundred, so we must be buying a new piece of equipment, I'm just figuring, a lot more, or? What, what are we doing?
A lot more is one, um, we've also gotten, um. A software package for the valve exerciser, which was seventy eight hundred or something like that. And that, you know, when you go right over the, the valve, you push a button, it, um, pinpoints it by GPS. It counts the number of revolutions, in what direction and everything. So it takes all the guesswork out of two o'clock in the morning, when you got water bubbling up and trying to find a valve somewhere that's under an inch of ice, you don't have to do that anymore.
So, we're gonna go out and spend for these things, or we've already bought?
We've already bought them.
So, why would we put fifteen thousand?
I don't remember, I don't remember.
Are there, are there also extra chemical pumps and wa, backwash pumps?
Yes, yeah. My, my cheat sheet's sitting on my desk.
Oh, no, no, it was, it was just when I saw the hundred, when I saw the hundred percent increase in that, I'm like, okay. We're, we're buying something, I just don't know what we haven't bought yet.
Chemical pumps periodically just quit, but it's every couple of years. There again, same, same situation. Personally, I don't think it's worth buying the service contract, when if you get two years out of it, you've paid for a brand new one, and then some.
So this is a one time, we're gonna go out and buy a couple things this year, and then?
No, that'll be, I mean, we buy two or three chemical pumps since I've been there, so it's every couple of years, you have to buy a new one, but.
But if we actually spent six thousand two forty seven nineteen in twenty twenty three. And we only spent seven thousand one hundred twenty five and twenty four. I'm trying to understand why we're not still at seven thousand five hundred. It's fifteen thousand, which is eight thousand dollars that can go with the two grand, that comes up to ten thousand dollars we've been able to cut back.
And what was that?
Out of water.
What was that one?
That line was zero two zero six three eight zero eight three zero zero machinery and equipment under water treatment facility.
Oh, um, one thing that I'm looking to get is, um, a utility trailer. That valve exerciser, just the power plant alone is seven hundred dollars, or seven hundred pounds, that Jeff and I are muscling into the back of the pickup. And the exerciser itself is four hundred pounds. What I'd like to do is get a utility trailer and bolt it permanently to that, so we're not pushing and pulling and tugging and everything. You know, just back up and hook it up, and away we go. Which, that would be a one time expense.
And, and utility trailers cost seven thousand five hundred?
Uh, well, no.
What's the utility trailer cost?
Depending on which, what you get and how heavy, and of course, being that kinda weight, you need more than just a little snowmobile trailer.
Well, yeah, but I'd be saying, if you're saying two grand, I'd give you two grand on seven five.
So, I mean, we're looking at a trailer that, you know, carry a ton.
Ten?
So, if you're looking at, you know, just on line, anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand.
See, if we gave, if we gave them three thousand, it'd be ten five, right?
Right.
How about we, how about we, we change that fifteen thousand to ten thousand five hundred?
See, you guys thought that was tough.
No, we need these things, I'm just, I'm just saying, we just. Trying to get that seven percent increase closer to. Four, if you, if you wanna, where mine fall back four and a half.
So that's machinery and equipment, we're gonna go to ten five?
Ten five, from fifteen.
Moving on.
Yep.
Debt service, kinda, kinda do that. Benefits, we're not really, okay, the biggie, reserve allocation.
Good, before we go there, even though I know benefits, they are what they are, just have a question, and benefits under workers' comp. That seemed to have taken a huge jump from, we, we had six thousand in the budget last year, we spent in twenty twenty three, two thousand nine hundred. As of the end of May, we've only spent three thousand. What are we anticipating on workers' comp, or did they raise their, we go?
No, so those, those numbers are, those came right from VLCT this year, those are the actuals. Last fiscal year, some of the, some of, some of the benefits and insurances were put in the wrong location. Last fiscal year, some of the, some of, some of the benefits and insurances were put in the wrong location. So you'll see some spaces where it's way more than what we should have spent and then other spaces are way under where we should have spent. So that's why you'll see a little bit of lonkiness there.
But those are the real, I know, the, 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 the numbers are the numbers. I can't, I can't negotiate, that, that's what the insurance, but I mean, it was more of a question I'm saying. Boy, something, something really, really happened there.
Yeah, we saw, we saw a spike across the board in insurance.
Okay, good, moving right along.
That's a matter of opinion. Uh. Water reserve allocations is actually the next thing. Uh, looking to do charity.
How much is currently in that account? For that line?
Oh, man.
I, I looked that up.
Wait, man, Glenn's got it?
No, no, I, I looked that up and was, was looking at the allocations. Let's see what the latest ingredients ask to say.
Cause we, we pulled a bit from that to do the roof, didn't we?
Yeah. I wanna say there's a hundred and eighty seven left, but don't quote me on that.
Right, right.
Cause we spent a hundred and nine, almost a hundred and ten for the roof.
And that's not counting the fascia?
That's not, no, exactly. Right, not counting the fascia. That's twenty two thousand more. So it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars coming out.
And the next big capital expenditure would be. Meters down the road, we gotta keep that in mind.
Yeah.
And, uh, what else? As far as capital.
As far as big capital improvements.
You wanna make your ground?
I don't see.
Yeah, because it makes a big difference how much we put in.
They do the building assessment, which is required by the state every, what is it, three years, I think. And they've been doing this all along. I mean, that plan was designed for a twenty or twenty five year shelf life and, you know, like I said, we're forty plus now. Structurally, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just a matter of updating and keeping the insights going. Um, it's not huge, but like I was saying, the water lines will probably be my next project. And that doesn't have to be all done at the same time. You know, we can do a cold water line here, you know. A clarifier line there, that type of thing.
Is that something you can do in-house pretty much?
We do ninety percent of it in-house, yeah. Jeff and I. Keeps us busy, plus it keeps the town.
Cause we have a target.
Not spending so much money, but yeah, Jeff and I do a lot of this.
I, I think, uh, just a suggestion, between now and next budget season. To develop a capital improvement plan. Not necessarily all in one year, but. To have a better understanding of how we can best fund a proactive approach at fixing everything that needs to be fixed. Rather than trying to budget for the, the breakdowns and the, everything that just kinda happens. I guess unexpectedly, but also expectedly for a forty year facility. That would, that would be one suggestion that I think would be helpful for.
And there was, one of the trade show or trainings that I went to, the state does offer, and I'd have to go back and research it again, cause this was a couple of years ago. But they will help you do exactly what you just described.
Take advantage of that, that would be nice.
So Joe just got, came back with what we have for water and sewer.
Yep, so I'll give you the after the roof cost. After the roof, you have a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty two thousand.
And, and if I remember right, when we did our capital plan, we, we, we put some goals of here's the min and here's the max. And I was saying, I was trying to think of, but I thought the min.
It was like twenty and forty? Was it twenty and forty, something like that?
I, I, I can't remember what the min, min and max were. I, 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 I think it was quite a bit higher. I think we were, we were looking, like when, when he says a hundred and fifty, one that's left in there, I thought the minimum was, you're trying to keep about a hundred and fifty on the low end and you're.
Well, I meant annually.
Oh, no, and I, because the reason I hope, the reason you're asking that question is I looked at the thirty thousand you wanna put in the water capital improvement. I'm saying, okay, uh, we don't just put it, what's the logic? If we'd been putting, before we stopped and put nothing, we were putting twenty thousand. In there. I'm just saying, instead of thirty, why aren't we putting twenty, getting back on pattern? We have a hundred and fifty already there. If something huge comes up, we're gonna bond it, just like we did the sewer plant and, and go forward. We just need something that's gonna cover.
That twenty thousand is a few years back.
You think?
We're at the minimum. We're, if, if that was the decided minimum.
I'm, I'm, I'm guessing off the top of my head. I, I don't have the paper in front of me.
It's probably close. I can't imagine wanting to get too far below that at any time, so.
But, I mean, I, I, I'm not, if, I mean, I'm up, if you guys are saying that you, you're, you're, you're more comfortable putting more, I'm not gonna, uh. Tell you no. Again, all I'm trying to do is get that seven percent.
So you're gonna put thirty thousand in right now if we don't do nothing? This is thirty thousand.
Well, and, and, and what, that's ten thousand more than what we.
There's ten thousand more than we, we had done.
Than we normally would have been putting in there.
But we got down the road, we're gonna have meters, we're gonna have other things go. And ten thousand dollars don't go very far nowadays.
But, but is the, the meters, you don't go, you don't go in here for the meters, do you?
I don't really remember where we used that money from.
Do you go in here for the meters?
You said that just a short while ago, that's where the meters.
And then when you put the meters, you spent how much?
Hundred and ninety.
So, and you have a hundred and fifty in there now. This year, if you put twenty thousand in there, you'd be at a hundred and seventy. One more year, you're at the hundred and ninety.
Then you're zero.
You're zeroed out, but I'm, but I'm saying, we, we can plan for a rainy day all over the place. How many, how many million do you want?
Well, you wanna, you wanna cut that down to twenty five thousand? What's the difference?
So, so if you wanted to get to four percent, taking out ten thousand gets you to four point three three.
That's.
If you're looking for, if you're looking for a target.
That was, well, that was the critical one for me to get, but I'm just saying, just throwing the numbers out. I'm, we all gotta look the taxpayer in the eye when they get their water and sewer bill after July one. I know, and I, I think this year we have our best opportunity. To keep it as a very minimal impact compared to the increases that, that we've been getting. You don't get that opportunity very often. I don't wanna squander it, that's all.
It would be interesting, and this goes as a taxpayer, not an employee. But it would be an interesting breakdown to see your water costs versus your sewer costs. I know it's water sewer budgets.
So, and I've always said this, and I've never understood, and I still don't really, what you meter, what you take in, but you don't meter what you put out. So a lot of people are on water and sewer in town. I'm lucky to be water, private sewer.
Sewer's more expensive.
But why don't, why don't they track sewer going out?
By May.
Yes, please, no.
When you're talking water and sewer, you are consuming the water.
Right.
When you're treating the wastewater, you're not just treating the water that was consumed, you're, you're treating the I and I.
Right.
So it's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, chemicals and, and.
So you can't, you still have to, um, have those expenses distributed amongst the users because. It's running the plant, it's treating the sewage. So you can't meter that. It's not even.
Not to mention, can you imagine what a meter, a sewer meter would cost? How often do you be replacing them?
Well, it's not really, it, it wouldn't fund, you wouldn't fund the plant the way you need to fund it.
Right.
Because where would the extra income come from?
True, true, true.
Yeah, there is, like, it's tougher thinking of revenue stream for.
Right, no, and I get a lot of people saying, well, you know, you were in the water plant, why is it so expensive? Why are my bills so high? And I'm like, but it's not just water. You know, it's.
And then the other thing too is, is you. Glenn hates to hear this, but, uh, anytime we look at, we look at monies from the FDA or somebody like that. They always tell us how cheap our water is. Hard to believe.
And I think, and I think we're, we're outraged.
It is, um.
Someplace in the middle is probably the, probably the truth.
Being a, being a surface water town, not a well, our expenses are more just because we're dealing with that. But our raw water coming in from inland pond is better than some communities' finished water that they're gonna put out in the tap.
Again, uh, when getting back to this last one, not to beat the dead horse to death.
No, that's fine.
I'm, I was looking for that thirty thousand to be twenty thousand this year for one more year. And the reason, some of my logic right there is saying, I wanna keep that water and sewers so that it's not a major increase. Our, as a taxpayer, I think our taxpayers are gonna see enough of an increase in their tax bill with the education tax and, and their municipal tax.
That's not your fault.
That's not my fault, but I, I can, I can control what I can control and I can control water and sewer. And that's why I'm saying.
So, so.
I, I.
Overtakes.
I'm saying I would put twenty thousand.
And other parts of the tax bill, you would subsidize.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm saying when someone gets their water and sewer bill and, and they, and they ask me, is, is, is that the best you could do? I wanna look them in the eye and say, yes, it is. The way I do that, twenty thousand versus thirty this year.
How many miles of water line are near end of life?
I have no idea.
We have a capital.
Hundred percent.
I mean, it was scary, it was scary.
The airport break was, is a perfect example. Both pipes weren't that old.
No, no.
But the soil and the condition and, and that type of stuff. You know, I, that's hard to explain because there, you've got some pipes a hundred years old that are still just as, almost as good as the day they were put in. But then you got twenty year old pipes like the ones on the airport, rode the brake majorly.
Um, what do you wanna do here?
What if, at the end of the, at the end of the day here. July, June thirty, July one comes around, the leftover money that ain't spent, can we put that in a reserve?
Yes, I think you have to ask the voters, any surplus money, do you?
But you don't have that at that point. You've gotta wait for the audit.
No, this is, this is your money because it's, it's a, it's water, it's, it's enterprise fund. They always, you know, it's funny, I asked the auditor this, and the enterprise fund is funny because they always say that you don't have any money because of depreciation. I can ask, I can ask if there's money left over to move it, but what I'm always told is no, there's no money to move.
That's why you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand his math, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm not quite getting this.
Yeah, move it now.
Move it now?
I mean, you could do that if you wanted.
And that would be because.
The reason I, the reason I'm saying I.
Kind of roll ball things for a few years and then like that third or fourth year, knowing that you've had excess money over the last three or four years. Go out and get that new truck or go out and get that new piece of equipment, if, if that's how it's gonna work. I'd always add it back into the general fund.
No, it does not go to the general.
Doesn't go to the general.
No.
That's a no.
What? One more time?
Wow.
What do you wanna do?
I want twenty thousand, not thirty.
I knew that. I wasn't asking you.
Just wanted to make it clear.
I was not asking you.
Just wanted to make it clear.
I already had that, you know. I'm good with the twenty thousand this year, if we can, but next year we've gotta raise that up.
Okay.
Yeah, same.
Okay. That's about the third thing we promised to do better next year on this, this, this particular meeting.
We're kicking all the cans down the road.
Yes, we are.
Lots of cans kicked, yep.
Can being kicked at every, every line item. Okay. Bottom line.
Uh, so you've moved it to four point three three percent?
On just the twenty? Or is that the whole?
That's the whole, your, your entire water budget increases four point three three percent at this point.
For the time being?
For the time being.
We're good.
Can I, well, have, have one more comment?
Now. Why not?
Yes, no, yes, no. No, I, cause I put a question on my sheet and it was water revenue. We've talked about there are four different places looking to buy water. And I'm thinking there's a lot of ways to control your costs. Some of it is your revenue. It's a little easier to generate revenue with water than I think it is with sewer. Did we make any gains in that?
Now, we bring that up, one of those line items, and I would have to go back and look at my sheet.
Sounds like a challenge.
Uh, I think, I think it's small tools and stuff, but anyways, it's a, a water meter with a backflow preventer and a shut off. Um, for the hydrant out here on West Park Place. Um, I just sold fifteen thousand gallons of water for a pool, to a pool company. We're gonna be able to monitor exactly what we're selling these places, not just, oh, that was about a thousand gallons or whatever. So, and that, what did I give you for a quote?
I don't remember. It was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I've had a lot of mu- numbers in my head too.
But we have, we have actively reached out, and I know the state's reached out and wanted to buy water too. Construction, when they come through and pay, we'll sell them water. When something happens, we're actively trying to take advantage of it.
And, and this will be the best opportunity to prevent any contamination to the water system. Cause right now it's just a fire hose with a gate valve. And you close the gate valve while it's still under pressure, so nothing goes back into it. Um, this will be a meter designed for coming off a hydrant and a backflow preventer designed for that also. And, uh. I wanna say is right around three thousand, but you're also talking three inch meter and backflow preventer.
Now it's up?
I am, I'm good.
Sewer. Same process.
I like the budget.
We did the tough one first, folks. The sewer, how do you argue with someone who's.
Sleeping right now, I know.
Me too.
The number looked almost too good to be true when I looked at the bottom line and I'm saying, what is that, minus one point, one six percent? How do you take yes for an answer?
Any questions before we do that? Before we take yes for an answer? Cause I'd be more than happy to take yes for an answer. We put forty thousand in the sewer capital improvement. Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Wait, wait just a minute. Why, uh, no, I just, no, well.
Oh, here we go. He did.
No, when you, sewer capital improvements, that we, we're, we took forty thousand and we're putting it there. And what I'm saying, we have a totally refurbished, not totally.
By May.
Thank you.
This is why we need to put money into our capital. So this is our flow without any rainstorms. This is a flow with rainstorms. So this is what our collection system is doing.
It's constantly running.
So this is a normal day.
Can you guys see the, the loss? Sorry, can you see the line in the middle? Yeah, yeah.
So this is a normal day.
Right.
See the blue line around the middle?
Real close to the center, real close to the center, yeah.
This is, um, normal two hundred thousand gallons to the plant. This is almost a million.
Yeah, that's gear.
So.
Powers.
This is putting us above our permit, for one thing, cause we're permitted for five hundred thousand over the month. Um, this is costing us tons of extra money in chemicals because I gotta sell my plant when this comes through. So we do have a new plant, but it's gotta get there and it's gotta be able to be treated. So that's why we need capital. Um, an inch and a quarter crack will bring in seven thousand gallons.
In, in a collection, so in this collection system.
Into the collection system, which ends up washing my plant out.
I got to, we gotta do some camera work recently.
This also is not just chemicals, this is labor, because you got two people monitoring the system now, because we've got a pump station that can't handle this, so we're dumping it in the river. Um, we've got another operator down at the plant trying to settle things down so we don't dump the plant in the river.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna do that.
No, so that's our capital.
So, so being consistent, you ran a number of what, what is, what's in the sewer capital improvement now?
Sewer, sewer capital is three sixty one, three hundred and sixty one thousand.
Three hundred and sixty one thousand?
What's your max?
Probably five, we would do around five hundred thousand probably.
We'll be up to four.
And which, which will get us.
Where'd it get there?
And we, we did, started last year's. And we, we get, started last year, it was, last year we capital grew, instead of zero, we, we put forty thousand there, and you're just saying, keep the same forty thousand and keep it going.
And, um, I do have.
It was just a question.
I do have a capital improvement plan, and I think that we need to start doing at least one manhole rehab, rehab a year, a minimum of one a year.
And I, I, I don't want my, I think we let you off real easy, so let me ask one more question, and that was it. No, but we, I asked the revenue question, sewer revenue, and I know I'm going, I'm going.
I can model it, but I don't know.
Nobody's gonna buy it, and well, the only way I, I can think of sewer revenue is saying, if we have sixty-five percent capacity, that means we have capacity.
We don't have sixty-five percent.
We don't, okay, what, what do we have for capacity?
We don't have much more capacity.
Okay, we're capac, so there is no.
Especially with this.
So what you're saying is, there is, there is no opportunity to get more.
There is, if we can correct a lot of this.
So what are the mitigation efforts that we need to put in place to correct?
Our collection system.
Okay.
So we need our manholes that are failing rehabbed.
Yeah.
Um, we know that we've got lines, um, we can pinpoint on the streets which lines we have to go and back truck out all the time, because they're collapsing. We know Fourth Street, we've got a problem, we know that capital, um, going out towards Stewart's, that, that end has got issues. Um, up by the railroad tracks, we have a lot of problems up there, we know, um, South Main, that whole area.
Okay, and then I'll leave you the last thought, my last, last thought. You know, at one time, the solar for, for, for generating, uh, did we?
I did look into that, and, um, it was going, we were gonna actually gain about thirty thousand dollars over fifty years, but we were gonna spend.
We were gonna, it wasn't cost the fact that you get it there.
Um, so I did look into that, but it just wasn't really gonna be usable.
Okay, I'm good.
Anybody else? We'll be right along. We have one more meeting before we have to separate, right?
Uh, the next meeting we'll separate.
Will we separate?
And then that's just a matter of reviewing it and then.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for coming in, very helpful.
Okay.
I got a thing. Sorry, guys, oh, Gary, don't leave me just yet.
Oh.
This, the CAI, the mapping. So, uh, we reached out to the, the people, the company that does our, um, mapping for the lots in town.
Sure, tax map?
Yeah, the tax map. They can put all of our water and our sewer lines, they, they, they already have our, our maps digital, digitally, um, but they can put it all online, so that way we have a, and you guys are gonna have to help me why we would do this. You're gonna have to make a case for me, but they can make it just like the streets and just like the tax maps, where our departments can see where the water lines are, um, and then I guess go and fix them, so. Maybe you guys can talk a little bit more coherently about it.
Does that help Mike with identifying your curb stops too?
It would.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, the, a perfect example is, and I keep hate, I hate to keep, you know, beating the dead horse, but the airport road, there was a valve that was put in and a pipe that's not on any map, and we've got maps back to two thousand and fifteen. We never knew that it was there, which would have saved the salt tank from going empty. The only reason we even found out was because Eric Kerber stopped by and he said, oh, yeah, did you guys shut this one off? And it goes crosslot from Airport Road over to Washington Street. Nobody knew it was there, Nate didn't know it was there, so that's.
It'd be nice to have that documented.
Yeah, and that's another reason why we're gonna be starting the valve exercising and get every single valve that we know of.
So what's the cost, what, what you got in, in front of you?
That's always the thing, isn't it?
Yeah, it's always.
But think about, if you got a break in the middle of winter, if you doesn't know where it is, you're guessing, digging, you know?
Um, part of the reason for wanting to digitize it is, A, it opens us up for actual extra money, because if we know what we have, then we know what needs to be repaired. The other thing is, is how many connections do we have to the wastewater system that are not getting built? Because we're finding out that there are people that are connected that have not been paid, because they made their own connections over the years.
Their own connection.
So, um, we really actually have no, um, really good maps of who's connected and where they're connected, to be perfectly honest. So, knowing that is kind of a powerful tool.
So how much are we talking?
So it's, it's short, short money, at, um, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, so you, you split that in half.
And you've got, you've got money somewhere in account to pay for that, don't you?
See, that's why I made better than thousands.
My name, my number.
Math water, math water shore.
Capital improvement, so.
I was gonna drop it in the budget, but if you. That doesn't sound like that's gonna.
No, no, I, you, that's the reason you put these pockets of money aside, so you can just go and do it, I don't wanna.
Okay, so, so if we wanna do this, then I would need a motion to spend out of the capital reserves.
I'll make a motion to spend.
Do you have bids for this?
Uh, it would be single source, this guy does our mapping, he's, he's the one. He would overlay it onto the existing map that he's already made, so you, you'd see all your, all your streets.
All right, I'm good, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we spend.
Nineteen thousand, seven fifty.
Nineteen thousand, seven fifty out of the water sewer.
Water and sewer reserve fund, yeah.
Reserve fund.
I'll second that.
Everybody understand what we're gonna, questions, comments? All those in favor?
I, I. Thank you for saving me.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. We're good.
Thank you for the long.
And actually, the state requires this anyway, as part of our permit renewal, so we kinda skated through it this year, um, but.
We wouldn't want to outstate the state.
No, but it makes sense, I mean, it's this day and age.
We're good.
Why would you have that?
It does only make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Good night.
Hey, to hear that call, Mike, thanks for coming in under duress.
Yeah, and then you take money away from sides. Bye, guys.
Uh, revenue efforts, we kinda beat that to death today, let's move on. Board roundtable, unless anybody's got anything on the, we don't have anything yet, board roundtable.
The only thing I have to say is, I keep getting more proud of our DPW crew. They, uh, they're doing an outstanding job this year, and that's, that's all I need to say tonight.
No, I agree, things are looking really good around town.
Yeah, I will serve that, that's all I got.
Got anything else? You got anything else? Anything else?
I'm good.
Um, tree in cemetery that was, that they want eleven thousand dollars to.
So there was, there was the big tree that, Mr. Greeno, I think you and I went up, looked at, that big pine. Pine? Um, it's eleven thousand dollars to take down from, oh, from one quote, but we'll get another quote.
Get a lot of quotes.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand dollars.
I'll give you the.
No, ten, I thought we were gonna spend ten.
In one tree?
Hey, they got, they had the size of that tree and what they gotta bring in, that's.
Wow.
I gotta, too much money. I gotta call for four hundred to take down a maple, so.
It was a pretty shaped.
Reparable. I mean, I'm keeping the wood for fireworks, drop the price a little bit, but. Yeah, I'll get the information, I'll give, I, tree guy that we're having, take a tree down.
Tree are they talking about?
Four hundred bucks, but we're ke, we're keeping the wood, it would've been an extra hundred if you would've hauled it away.
Yeah, give me the two thousand.
Yeah, I'll.
Okay. Um, yeah, let's not spend a little, they said it was three, I, I talked to Joe, as you might have guessed.
Did you say?
I, Joe didn't, or actually, I talked to Gary, and they said that, uh, they said it would take three days. So that means they get, they get four thousand dollars a day to cut down a tree, they're, they're raping us. You know, it's just a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
What did he say, seven or ten?
What?
To, to cut down the tree.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
It, it's a great big tree.
It's a, I was just gonna say, it's a huge tree in the cemetery with the entrances you need. I'll be interested, but I bet ten grand is.
I would go with the Louis Freener's theory at that point.
Just hit the chance, I'll be done with it.
The Lord put it there, the Lord will take it away.
All right.
That's what you said about snow.
Thank you.
Ooh, that's even better.
Okay, let's move to financials, yes.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to pay the payroll for thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-one cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Make a motion to pay the, or two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Checkbook status is three hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. You should be happy, Bob, it's getting, it's, it's pretty low, I don't know, we can make pay.
Still not under two hundred thousand, but that's all right. All right.
Good.
We need an executive session, don't we?
Make a motion, we go into executive session under one VSA three thirteen A one for personnel, and one VSA three thirteen A two, real estate negotiation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?